Meeting of the Isidua School Board. We are hybrid in person. We are very excited about this, so we are in the building. We are on Zoom. We are on YouTube. We are doing all the things. And if there are any technical glitches, I'm sure it'll be my fault, but we're going to do our very best. So we are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. And next on our agenda is student input. I believe our students are on Zoom. Marnie, do you have introductions for us?
Yes, so our students are Gibson X. We have Megga Mishra, who is a junior, and Spencer Haines.
Okay. Okay, so do you guys, do our students know to turn on your cameras and unmute your mics? Oh, dear. Are they there?
I'm sorry. That would help.
So Megga. Would help, yes.
Spencer Haines and Megga Mishra are our students.
Hi, I'm so sorry. I am trying to turn on my video, but it said unable to start video because the host has stopped it. So.
Yeah, me too.
All right, we're working on it. Give us just one second. Okay, you should be able to turn your camera on now. There she is. Perfect. Okay, so decide among yourselves who's going to start, and please give us your input.
Hi, okay, so I was told by Rachel, our ASB coordinator, that we were going to answer one of six questions. So I'm going to choose to answer what's the biggest thing that's happening at our school right now that has students energized, learning, talking, concerned or questioning. So for us Gibson X students, we're going through a really unique period of time right now because we are heading into the end of our second trimester, which means we're going to have our Design Fair Exhibition. For those of you who don't know, exhibitions are like the equivalent of finals at Gibson X, where we showcase one project that we're doing currently that we've done throughout the whole school year that has us very interested and engaged. So current, obviously, a Design Fair Exhibition, it's set up like a science fair where people are walking to your little booth and you're explaining, and this is something that's very difficult to replicate in a virtual format. And so currently, there's a couple methods being suggested, and we've decided on having prerecorded segments that we're going to show at our schools. But that's also having us very, we're actively thinking about how we're going to use our prerecorded segments to keep people engaged and use creativity to showcase our project in a way that's going to be really cool for other students to see and be inspired from. So yeah, that's something that's going on at Gibson X right now.
Hello, I'm Scarlett Som. I'm an eighth grader and play trumpet in third period wind symphony at Maywood Middle School. In band this year, I've really liked working together in the soundtrack site with the rest of my band section. I know it's not the same thing as working together in person, but there are some advantages, like spending a lot of time working on your piece, making it exactly how you want it before it's finished. I also really enjoyed working on our piece Castles and Dragons.
You know what? Scarlett, hang on just a second because I think you've jumped ahead on the agenda because we are doing the input from the Gibson X student reps.
I'm so sorry.
No, it's okay. It's really confusing. I didn't stop you right away because I got a little confused too. Just hold on. You're going to be about two more agenda items away.
All right, sorry. I got a button saying the host asked me to unmute, so I started talking.
No, no, no problem. Just wait. We will get to you. We want to hear from you.
We're waiting to see is Spencer Haines on.
Oh, hi. It still won't let me turn my camera on. Me and Megga really should have organized who's doing what question because I also prepared. Okay. Hi.
There's Spencer. There we go. Okay.
Biggest thing, but I was going to talk about our assemblies because we've started doing weekly assemblies now, which is something very new for us, where an advisory, a different advisory each week is going to be planning the assemblies. And my advisor has been talking about our plans for the school like nonstop, and it's a really exciting opportunity to like engage with the entire school, which is not something we've had the opportunity to do.
Okay, thank you very much. And please, both of you, feel free to stay with us for the entire meeting. You're welcome to provide input or ask questions as we go through the agenda. If you can just, you know, raise your little virtual hand, we should be able to see you on the meeting on the big screen that we're looking at. I'm having trouble coming up with the words for this. But anyway, we welcome your participation in any of the agenda items. And thank you again for being here on Zoom. Okay. So now we are moving to public input, and this is public input for items not on the regular agenda. So if you are here to talk about remote or in-person learning, which is probably the biggest thing on the agenda that we might get public input for, or naming of the schools or board policies, then you should wait and give input when we get to those agenda items. If however, you have public input for items not on the regular agenda, we will take that now. If you're on the Zoom meeting, I will ask you to raise your virtual hand. And I know people were concerned about how we're going to balance this. I know that there are a lot more people on Zoom than there are in the room. So if we get to a point where I have to curtail public input, I'm going to try to balance that appropriately. So let's see. That one runs. Okay, and I see one hand on the Zoom, so I am going to go to Ruth Walker. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I got so distracted by that that I forgot the rules of public input. Public input is limited to two minutes. Please state your name and your attendance area prior to speaking. I will cut you off after two minutes. And please know that although the board is very interested in hearing what you have to say, we will not be responding. So it's input, it's not board engagement. And with that, Ruth Ann Walker, you can go ahead.
Thank you for your time. I've had the opportunity to speak before, but I haven't had the opportunity, nor do I think we've discussed a very important issue that's going on with many of our kids right now, and that is how we are addressing kids with disabilities. I have two kids that are in this district that have 504s. I have reached out multiple times and expressed concerns of not acknowledging, reading, or following up on their 504s. I also have reached out to teachers and administrators. I have set up 504 intervention meetings. And then after the meeting, I'm told there's another meeting, and another meeting, and another meeting. And meanwhile, my fifth grader, who's incredibly struggling in school right now, who has dyslexic, dysgraphia, and dyscalculia, is not getting her needs met. She's continuing to be denied the intent of her 504. The state and federal laws have not made any exceptions for meeting the 504s and IEPs at this time. I know at the last board meeting that the board talked about how they wanted to take care of the most vulnerable and that they were addressing kids with disabilities, and that was their priority. And I'm here to tell you that is not happening. In great concern for my fifth grader, who was struggling so much, and also my ninth grader with a 504, I had my fifth grader tested, and she tested in the one percentile in math. I'm letting you know she was not in this situation last year based on other kids' her grades. When we are not adhering to kids with disabilities, we are providing complete social injustice, and we are not allowing them the intent. I am being told over and over again, we have to just do the best we can, and we do care about these kids, and they're our priority. But I am seeing the tragic effects happening to my kids with and without disabilities. But I don't think we spent enough time talking about the priority. I know later we're going to address the in-person learning and the urgency.
Okay, that's two minutes.
I just want to end on one thing just briefly. It would just take a second. But my second grader, who's been struggling so much to me, came to me this morning, and she read a book from, she read a book from The Land of Stories, and it said, "It's a sign of the times, another familiar voice out of a young woman. I'm sure it won't be long enough before they stop building schools altogether. Every kid will be plugged into a device and taught at home. Can you imagine anything worse?" And this is true for all kids, but kids with disabilities, there is nothing worse than ignoring these 504s and legal documents to protect. Otherwise, it's just complete injustice for them.
Okay, thank you very much for your input. Emily Melagrana.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I guess I would like to, well, I'll just get started. A fourth grade teacher. When I teach my students what equity means, I tell them the classic picture of the baseball field in the crates. I say, "Fair" doesn't always mean equal. I support the choice for in-person hybrid. However, here's the deal. That's not equity. We don't have enough space. That's not equity. So, yeah, it's not equity. So if we don't have space for everyone, then it's not equitable to give the choice to everyone. We still have to focus, like the previous speaker said, on those students with IEPs because no matter what grade level they are, there is an intersectionality between how old they are and any other barrier that they have to learning. The first grader who can't read, who also has an IEP, or who also is experiencing homelessness is at a greater risk than just the first grader. I'm sorry, that's the hard truth. I know we're all struggling, but some are struggling more than others. And equity means that we give who needs it the most there, right? We need to be, again, focused on those kids who are the furthest removed from educational justice. I know what the definition is, but what I'm saying is we haven't done enough yet, right? We, these kids need to be back more than others. And it's time for us to be thinking about what truly are, what our privilege is as an individual person and then the larger community of who really needs those supports. I can't wait until everyone has that choice. But right now, it isn't equitable to give it to everyone when though so many at need are so much further away from educational justice. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to remind people that if we're talking about returning to school, we're going to do that on another agenda item. And I'm seeing more hands, so I hope that you guys are really talking about something that's not on the agenda. Valerie Buck. You can go ahead.
All right, there I am. Hope needed to enable that unmute. For doing that. My name is Valerie Buck. I am in the Liberty Service area, and I have two children in the school district. And I am going to just bring up to the board that there is a bill in the Rules Committee right now about school districts providing one-to-one devices for our kids. I think it's a wonderful bill since our district has still not provided one-to-one devices for our children. So I'm encouraging our community members to reach out to our officials and support this bill. It's a House bill in the Rules Committee. And I'm sorry you didn't write down the number, but I can look it up. Reach out to me, buckby@isidua.edu. And I will give you that House bill number. I would also like to recommend that we opt for a lease option of laptops for our students to use. Many districts provide us just laptops for much cheaper than we purchase our very expensive Dell laptops for. And if we did a three-year lease, students would have the option to purchase them at the end of the three years. That does encourage students to take really good care of the devices, and it provides every teacher and student with the same operating system, so the same Windows versions, and makes it really much easier to facilitate in-person or remote instruction because we're all working with the same type of equipment. And so please consider one-to-one for our schools. Let's do it now before, you know, it's a law that says we have to. I know we can make that happen. And please consider leasing the devices so that we don't have these five-year-old clunkers that are at the end of the lifecycle and not usable for our kids. Thanks so much.
Okay, thank you for your input. And, okay, looks like the other hands went away. So we are now, where are we? Oh, we're at the consent agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that these were all for the agenda item. You want to go now? Okay, I was misinformed. I'm sorry. Caitlin. I wasn't eliminating. I thought you'd wanted to go later. I'm sorry.
It's fine. I had a couple of topics, but I wanted to talk about one in particular, and I felt it was good to talk about it right now. My name is Caitlin Schreiber. I am in the attendance area of Skyline High School, PLMS, and Discovery Elementary School. And forgive me, I'm not a crier, but I seem to feel this way today because I was at the Isidua School District Vaccination Clinic today as a volunteer. And it was such an incredible experience to see our community come together. I know it was something that has taken a long time, and I really wish that Dr. Gallinger was here so that I could thank him in person for all of his hard work in making it happen. I stood outside in line and talked to many of the teachers and those that had been so worried and were so grateful for the opportunity to be able to have a vaccine. I witnessed the inside of the gym, the way it was organized, and can just imagine the hours and hours of time and months that it took for this program to actually happen. So today, I just want to thank you for doing what we can, when we can, to make things the best that we can for our district and our community. It was a really great experience, and I just, again, want to thank you and Dr. Gallinger for making it work. And I'm very, very grateful for the opportunity. Thanks very much.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. And I'm sorry, I was remiss in mentioning that Dr. Gallinger is not here with us. I expect him momentarily. As you can imagine, he was tied up with.
You know, he was very, he was very busy, and he actually walked up and down the line and talked to almost every single person individually. It was an incredible job, and he really just, he did a wonderful job today. So I imagine he is tired, so I'm sure we'll see him soon. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Yeah, and I do expect him momentarily, but we're not going to wait for him to start committing. So with that, we can move on to the Consent Agenda. And, oh, that's very small. The Consent Agenda is a meeting management tool whereby the board is able to pass multiple items with a single motion. The Consent Agenda items have all been reviewed by the board prior to this meeting. Any board member may remove an item from the Consent Agenda and place it on the regular agenda for discussion. So do I have a motion?
I move. We approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. And I also should just mention, for those of you watching the meeting, because we are in person, we are all masked, and I'm realizing, just listening to myself, that it sounds a little garbled. We're going to try to enunciate as best we can, but it is a little blurry out there. Okay, regular agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none.
Okay. And I guess I should also mention, because people are watching this and might be somewhat confused about it, that because the board is trying to follow all of the appropriate health COVID regulations and precautions, we are distancing six feet apart, which has required us to bump the superintendent off the dais onto his own separate table, which we're not going to call the kids' table, but it's really hard. But we got him his own camera and his own microphone, and he is here with us in the room. But if the board looks a little different, that's why. Okay, next on our agenda is the report out on the board's legislative conference. So back, what was it, a month ago, I want to say? Normally, the board goes down to Olympia on a Sunday. This is WASDA, which is our professional organization, but it's also done with WASA, which is the Organization of Superintendents, and WASBO, which is CFOs and business managers. And the three organizations get together, and we listen to various speakers talking to us about legislative issues. And then the following Monday, we go on the Hill and talk to all of our legislators. And of course, we don't have conferences in person anymore. So we had those sessions on Zoom, and we also did not go talk to our legislators because they're not seeing anyone in person either. But we did want to just report out on what we gleaned from the legislative conference. Would anyone like to? Sorry. I'm sensing that Marnie really wants to speak.
Well, I was going to say, I think what was really interesting is in the discussion, and we'll probably talk about it a little bit more when we talk about the legislative agenda, but that the legislature really is looking at trying to do a whole harmless bill. And it was much talked about, and we'll give an update because that bill actually has changed since our legislative conference. But I think that, out of all the things that we talk about, that and the E-rate, which are kind of, or just digital equity, are the two big things. There's a third one, and I can't remember because I wrote it down on my little notepad that I don't have right by me because I'm not used to bringing it with me. But those are two key issues that we'll be discussing when we do finally get a chance to meet our legislators in person. Well, not in person, via Zoom. So, which we'll talk about also during the legislative.
Okay. Any other thoughts or comments?
I missed having the students there, too.
I did miss having the students.
And getting to, a chance to meet with them and talk with them and guide them through how to do their advocacy. And they're such good advocates when they're there.
Superintendent.
Yeah, President Weaver, I just, I'm recalling back, and it has been a while since the conference, but there was quite a robust discussion that involved Superintendent Rake doll related to the current six-foot rule that is in effect as a result of COVID. And there is one important takeaway, and I think that it needs to be noted that a six-foot rule equals hybrid learning. There is really no way for just about any of the school districts in Washington State to fully function and maintain a six-foot distance between its students. I know that the Superintendent of Public Instruction has put, has brought this forward to the governor, to the Department of Health. I know it's being considered. We know that in Western Europe, they've been using the three-meter rule. And so I just thought that was an interesting conversation, and I will tell you, it's one that continues to happen among superintendents and, you know, directed towards our public health officials. And so, and again, I'm not necessarily advocating one way or the other right now, but I think if the science allows it, and it's, and we can do so in an appropriate manner, I would hope that we would be considering the six-foot rule because I think that's something that will help us get back to a, what I would consider a more normal type of schooling in person as we move forward. So I thought that was an interesting conversation that occurred that day as well.
Yeah, that was actually the one thing that I highlighted on the notes that I took from that day because when we talk about getting back to normal and having all of our students in our schools full-time, we cannot do that as long as the six-foot rule is in place. So when people say, "Well, we need to know what school is going to look like in the fall." We can't tell you, and that's why. That's one reason why. It's a big reason why. So thank you for that. Anybody else? Marlon has just arrived. Did you want to say anything about the ledge conference? Or am I putting you on the spot? You are our ledge rep, so.
Yeah, I don't have anything.
Okay, that's fine. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I know you've been a busy person. Okay, that brings us to something fun that we don't do enough of, which is more students. And March is apparently music in our school month. And Dale Walters, who is a Sunny Hills music teacher, is here to talk to us about music. And I think that first very eager student was part of your crew. And it's perfectly okay. I totally understand how you got confused because I wasn't really clear about what I was asking for. But we're really excited to hear from you, so take it away.
Thank you so much. Yes, I am the full-time music teacher at Sunny Hills Elementary. And we have three wonderful students that are going to speak. And we actually, because music is a K-12 program, we thought it would be best if we had three representatives. So one for elementary, one for middle school, and one for high school. And then after they share about their experiences with the ISD music program, we have a short video to share of just the things that have been happening this year in music across the district. So Jas Noor is going to be our first speaker.
Hello, everybody. My name is Jas Noor, and I'm nine years old, and I'm a third grader at Apollo. My teacher is Ms. White. That was my new teacher. My original teacher was Ms. Henry. Also, I'm very happy to be here and tell you how much I like music. What I like about music and what it means to me is that it inspires me to do what I love. I love playing music by clapping my hands. I also like being creative and using other stuff to make music. I also like singing, and that's one of the things we do in music here at Apollo. Playing games on Zoom like seven jumps is fun because it gets us moving around. Other games like Vamos a Hugar helped me learn another language. Bedbugs was just for fun, and we learned a new rhythm plus a new note. All those games were fun and really made me happy when I was down. I'm excited for music next year because the pandemic might be over or close to over, or it might be safer outside. Then we can all go back to Apollo and enjoy music.
Thank you so much. And our next speaker is going to be Scarlett for middle school.
Hello, I'm Scarlett Som, and I'm an eighth grader and play trumpet in third period wind symphony at Maywood Middle School. In band this year, I've really liked working together in the soundtrack site with the rest of my band section. I know it's not the same thing as working together in person, but there are some advantages, like spending a lot of time working on your piece, making it exactly how you want it before it's finished. I also really liked working on our piece Castles and Dragons, and I'm really impressed with how Ms. Sunmark, my band teacher, was able to turn it into something amazing, regardless of our current circumstances, with video to go along with it. There are some difficulties, of course, such as not being able to hear the rest of the group while we play together or warm up because the sound lag on our computers would be cacophonic. Not being in person makes getting immediate feedback about our tone, rhythm, or just generally how we're coming together musically much harder. However, I have discovered some things that have helped me with online learning. For example, I now am better at finding sheet music for songs I enjoy listening to in my free time on the internet. I know the right distance away from my computer. I should have my trumpet to get the best tone quality in recordings. And I've found some really cool things on the websites we use. And I've found some really cool things on the websites we use that help me play. To me, band is more of a place where I can relax and have fun with what I'm doing. Band doesn't always really feel like a class. It's more of an enjoyable experience. And when band is my next period, I always have that little fist pumping moment, and I get really happy. Music to me is an expression of personality, and I always know that in band I can express my personality by how and what I play. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Scarlett. Our next speaker is going to be Ethan for high school.
Good evening to the members of the board and all of those that are attending at home. My name is Ethan Doan, and I'm a junior at Liberty High School. I play a multitude of different instruments and am, I am in both the wind ensemble and the jazz band under Mr. Tanner. This year, we've made some drastic changes to how we learn because obviously, we aren't able to get together and play our instruments traditionally. Instead, I've had to study different topics, music theory, and practice in new ways. In some ways, learning online has really opened my eyes to several different opportunities. For example, we spent lots of time working on electronic music production. It's a nice change of pace, and in my opinion, it's great for student musicians. Orchestra music in modern times has really taken a backseat to electronically produced songs. And while it helps for students to sit down and practice their instrument, it's also good for us to create something from scratch and flex our creativity. However, studying music online requires for students to have self-motivation and perseverance. As being in class in person, students are surrounded by music and are focused on doing nothing but that, making music. In online school, there can be countless distractions that keep students from participating. And sometimes, the student's learning environment prevents them from practicing. I know that I and many others have been subject to this laziness. I've got to admit that I've spent weeks without picking up my instrument during class because how can that be enforced, right? Well, luckily, I keep music as a large part of my life, and I think it's important that music is fun and free. Sometimes, I can't help but just feel creativity flow through me as I come up with melodies and basslines and drum patterns for songs. So of course, I can't wait to get back into class, like playing on a stage in front of an audience, ripping a saxophone solo, you know, improvising up and down the scales. And while music requires structure and practice, like in traditional band, music is also an art, which is a beautiful art, and requires boundless creativity, love, and warmth. It's been difficult learning online, to say the least. But several aspects of online learning are very appealing and would enhance uh, education of music once life returns to normal. Thank you.
Thank you so much to all three of our uh, speakers. We have a short video to show you as well uh, of just all of the great things that are happening across the district. So thank you so much for uh, letting us have this moment to celebrate music in our schools month.
Thank you.
We are doing our version of the cup game.
I just really like music, which is like an inspiration. There's like so many forms of music, and it's just like.
For me, dancing is a awesome, a fun way that you can express your feelings.
Music is a way to be creative and have fun at the same time.
I love music. I have been learning music since I was a newborn.
It can calm you down. It can get you excited or pumped up.
I like making music. That's probably like one of the best feelings. So like, that's what music means to me.
So, in honor of this month, I'm going to sing you a song.
You can sing a song and I'll sing with you.
I like building circles and getting new toys and friends.
Everyone now, three things you like, go ahead.
And they're gone. Thank you so much. Oh, no, you are still there. Um, thank you so much for that. I'm I'm sorry that we're all wearing masks because you can't see the enormous grins on our faces watching that. And I know that being in a remote world is not ideal for music, and I'm always just so inspired when I see the creative and innovative ways that teachers such as yourself have worked around it to make it work. So thank you for that.
Thank you so much. And and really, it is uh, you know, the entire K-12 music program. So luckily, I was able to to reach out to my colleagues and have uh, other wonderful students share their experiences across the district. So thank you for the opportunity.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for reaching out to us to uh, celebrate music. That was great. And I don't know if you can top that, Superintendent Thily, but we are going to move on to um, remote and in-person learning updates. And I think we'll follow uh, the same pattern, which is I'll let you and your staff present. Um, we'll take some public input, and then we'll have board conversation.
Great. Thank you. And no, I cannot follow that. I I do have to say, thank you for putting that in front of me in the agenda, by the way. Uh, that was really amazing, though. So thank you again to Ms. Walters and all of those students. And I know the other uh, music staff who helped out with that. Really incredible, and we're so proud of the music program in our our system. And literally thousands and thousands of students participate in it. So that was a lot of fun. And I agree with your earliest comment, uh, President Weaver. We need to do more of that. And I have to say, one of the things I really miss when I visit schools, often I'll go into the orchestra, the band, or the choral room, and they always will do little something for me typically. In fact, I've even been able to conduct a few times over my career, which has been fun. Not that I know anything about conducting, but it's just fun to stand up there and pretend. Uh, and I'll miss that. I look forward to getting back into those rooms. So before I kick off, I just kind of wanted to echo some of the comments of Ms. Schreiber, the parent who gave public input. And um, I just have to acknowledge and give a huge shout out and thank you to um, Dr. Gallinger, Director Gallinger, Dr. Harlan Gallinger, some ISD staff, Mr. Turney, Dr. Karen Thies, and so many of our other ISD staff and volunteers who have been running our vaccination center. I got to be there on Tuesday for the the initial hundred and twenty or so. And then I know they had a very, very busy day today. And I I just can't express enough gratitude to to that team and the work that they've done. You're, you guys are truly my heroes. I mean, it's just really incredible. So thank you for that. I also wanted to just note that uh, we're back in our boardroom, and this is a big deal. It's been a year, literally a year for us. And some people, uh, I kind of forgot, to be honest. This was a new facility, a new space for us. Even a year ago, we had just started to settle in. And you might notice, behind me in the back of the room, we now have a new display case. That wasn't there last time, and uh, they have completed that. It's full of a lot of the trophies and things that uh, accolades the district has received over the years. All of that was brought over from the Holly Street campus, including the two Board of the Year uh, trophies are back there as well. So um, just happy to be back in our space again. It feels really good. And I know it's complicated and everything, and I have to be honest, it's not completely comfortable having this eye stare at me through the whole meeting. But um, I I'm really just pleased that we could be here.
And you know, while you're saying that, can we just give a shout out to our tech guy, Stephen Collins?
Yeah.
I I came in yesterday because I was terrified. It's like, if I'm telling people they should livestream, I have to know how to livestream.
That's right.
Um, now, to be fair, our teachers are going to get a lot more PD than than I did, but I was here for a good forty-five minutes, and he walked me through all the things and how the screens were going to look and everything. So guys behind the scenes, but he's doing an amazing job. So thank you for that.
Yes, thank you, Stephen, and all of our tech staff and everybody who has helped us with all of the technology issues over the last twelve months especially. So I did want to update um, the board, and I have some some staff that are going to be joining me as well. Um, and uh, we are going to talk a little bit tonight about uh, remote and in-person learning updates. So first of all, we are excited to have in-person options now for our preschool through third-grade students, as well as some of our students um, with special needs. Um, we are um, expanding opportunities uh, through, for ninth through twelfth grade students. And I believe uh, Executive Director Hood's going to touch on this a little bit, that have been identified by building staff who need some small group in-person support. We're also expanding opportunities to serve our K-eight students living in transitional housing, or students that we sometimes refer to as our McKinney-Bento students. So I'm very happy that we've been able to reach some agreements that are allowing those um, those um, important aspects of our learning uh, to move forward. We are thrilled that next week um, at our middle school level, our Fitness with Friends program, which is an in-person opportunity uh, for our students to participate in some uh, uh, physical activity with their friends, hence the name Fitness with Friends. So we're excited to see that opportunity coming as well. Um, but I do want, a- and we continue, of course, to work on the goal of getting our four or five students back by the twenty-fifth and our six through twelve students back by the twenty-ninth uh, per our discussion last week when we completed our uh, required OSPI template and submitted that. And um, so just a lot of uh, good, hard work moving forward. And of course, our vaccination center is a big part of that work too. I also want to acknowledge still that a sizable majority of our students in grades four through twelve, um, and even in grades um, preschool through through third, are still learning in a fully remote setting. And I continue to be impressed with our educators and students as they've developed their remote teaching and learning skills. We got to see a little piece of that tonight um, from our music uh, staff out there. Um, a- and I also want to be clear that as we work to implement um, more hybrid in-person options, our principals and our central support staff continue to work with and support our remote teachers and students. We know that's an important thing. Um, so I thought it would be good tonight uh, if we had Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, Rich Melish, share some of the examples of how his department has worked with our remote teachers um, and continue to support all of our teachers. And I see that uh, Executive Director Melish is at the podium. So Rich, if you could, just kind of share some of the ways that your department continues to support um, our teachers in that remote setting. And really, anything else you'd like to share as well, Rich?
Yeah, I think that uh, first I'd like to um, just acknowledge that we've had a dedicated team um, of our TOSSAs and our department working. Our elementary team has been led by uh, Director Kathy Conley, and has she has just been working endlessly to support uh, a team of TOSSAs and our instructional coaches to constantly listen. That's at the real heart of everything we've done this year on both the elementary and secondary levels, to really listen to our teachers and try to get what are they experiencing, what are they anticipating, what are they fearing with the next transition so that we can, so we can address our resources to um, as much to what they need as possible. The uh, secondary work has been, has been led and directed by uh, Director Don Wallace. And um, they, it's a little different at the elementary because the elementary teachers have five to six unique preps every day with all the subjects that they teach. Um, they are generalists, and they have, and we, our heart and soul of our elementary program has been that differentiation that happens when we can get to small group instruction. That's hard to do if you're creating lesson after lesson after lesson. So the elementary team is really focused on maintaining, providing supports and resources to scaffold for teachers, so they have some some resources that are just ready to go, a pacing guide to help keep them all on 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 a, a similar pace of instruction, um, and allow the teachers to get to where they can focus on the differentiating, the responding to students, the getting to small group instruction. Those things that we think are the most powerful parts of our learning program. So when we made the switch at the elementary level to start bringing in hybrid, we really didn't let up on the supports for the for the remote learning. We have kept up the the resources week after week available for teachers so that they can continue to focus on that differentiation and small group instruction. Uh, we continue to provide pacing guides, and we continue to offer kind of digital, ready-to-go resources. I also want to give a shout out to our instructional coaches because um, they are our our frontline when it comes to supporting teachers, listening to them, coming back to our TOSSAs and saying, here's what teachers are facing now. This lesson that you gave, fabulous. That one needs some tweaking. And and just really helping to keep our team informed. And the coaches and TOSSAs meet weekly together to analyze what's happening in the classroom and how we can adjust our resources. I would say that um, I want to give another shout out because I know that our teachers, our parents, our students, they were nervous with the transition of what would happen in remote learning. Uh, they were nervous about joining new classes, in some cases, crossing school boundaries and school lines. And our teachers were nervous because it was a new task for them, yet another new task this year. And what I would say is I am really, I'm really proud of watching because I think that there was a lot of nervousness and attention at the beginning. And I feel like those teachers out in the in the K-one and now the two-three, they embraced those students who had to go through a transition. They helped incorporate them. They they invited them into their classroom culture, their classroom family, uh, bringing them on, not feeling like visitors to somebody else's class, but becoming part of their class culture. Um, they made them proud of the mascot from their previous school, as we heard from our parents at the previous uh, board meeting. But but more, I just, I just see how our teachers have really worked to embrace those students that they received mid-year. Um, they they continued to integrate their social emotional learning. Um, and they continued to bring, establish a sense of place in their classrooms. And they continued to bring, establish a sense of place in their classrooms. So I, I do feel like our instructional coaches have been there for those remote teachers. I feel like our TOSSAs have continued to provide resources, ready to go, and support pacing. And I want to uh, throw out uh, two challenges that, that we've heard from teachers in the remote. One is with, with some increased class sizes, we've had to get really thoughtful about how, how to get to that small group instruction. It's, it's a little bit harder when you have more students to get to those small groups as frequently. And we have heard that challenge and we continue to support teachers as we try to help them address that challenge. It is a numbers game, so it's hard to completely address that. I also would say that uh, at first, not all of the students coming from different classes were on the exact same page of that math workbook. They weren't on the exact same page of that writer's workshop or that reader's workshop. So we had to put a lot of thought into helping to support our teachers. How do you take groups that are on slightly different pacing, slightly different places? And how to bring them together and, and help merge where they're at? So we've been paying a lot of attention to that. I, I say again, we, we are there to support just some amazing teachers who have been very committed, dedicated, and tireless in support of those children. So I, I do thank our teachers. I think our, I thank our TOSSAs and I thank our administrators who have, have just really embraced that. I, I will say in, in terms of then the transition to in-person, again, the front-loading of the SEL and the um, really some of the same problems of, of now, how do you, how do you re-establish patterns of learning and not get too far off your pacing? So that we can make sure that eventually those remote classes and those in-person classes in, in similar places within our curriculum. And I also want to thank, I, I actually love to thank the early learning folks that went ahead because we were able to go into preschool classes and make videos of how in-person learning can work to show our, our, our K one teachers first. And that, there was something about watching uh, some really fine uh, early learning staff give examples of what it could look like. So I, I appreciate that department's uh, amazing model that they, they created um, to help our teachers through. So I'll, I'll stop with that.
Rich, I, I was wondering if maybe you wanted to share some good news about our literacy materials?
Yes, so uh, Monday this week, our uh, Materials Adoption Committee for the Reading Foundational Skills came up with a recommendation. In fact, tonight it went to the Instructional Materials Committee. So it's now in the hands of the Instructional Materials Committee. This, this is the curriculum that is to support the standards that address how to read. So phonics, fluency, those, those standards. We chose that because in our data analysis, we learned that when students become fluent readers in our district, we have amazing data. Once they're fluent readers, our high students, our students who are fluent readers, they grow like crazy. We saw that we had a real barrier with students who were struggling to learn how to read. So we chose to really focus this adoption on studying the best instructional practices and um, the, the highest quality material for that. And this is our first adoption that's a multi-tiered adoption. It's, it's specifically designed to go hand in hand with a, a different structure for schooling around multi-tiered supports for students. I, I am very excited with the uh, recommendation the committee came up with. They did some really deep thinking. It involves uh, some assessment tools that will really help us do early identification of reading struggles and progress monitor them throughout the early years and well in, all the way through their um, fifth grade year. And frankly, we're piloting the same tool in our middle school as well right now. So we could possibly monitor those students all the way through eighth grade. It will not only help us identify gaps, but it'll also help us to watch, watch those gaps. And it's a highly predictive tool. It's very strongly aligned to the standards and very strongly predictive of success on our state assessment, the SBA. The instructional materials include evidence-based instructional practices and, and an evidence-based uh, intervention program that is really a gold star program. It's called Really Great Reading. Has uh, very strong reviews uh, among many agencies around how well it addresses, whether it be the needs of students with dyslexia, early learners who have other uh, reading difficulties, and, and even, even students who are English language learners. It really is a program that hits a fundamental piece for students who have reading difficulties. And then it's paired with Words Their Way in the recommendation, which is a program that is highly differentiated so that even our most advanced learners can get materials at their level. And it is small group based so that our fluent readers have something that can challenge them and extend their learning in, in these reading foundational skills. It will lead to a shifts in practice and structures and in professional development that I believe can not only help us with, with closing achievement gaps, which is ultimately what we were aiming for, but also with our COVID recovery. Because we, we really believe that they, these resources will really help students who, who perhaps had troubles internalizing their how-to-read lessons remotely. Um, so I, I am hopeful. I am excited. And I think it's uh, uh, an extremely high-quality selection of materials. So.
Thank you. I, I knew that that was important to Rich. That's been a huge project. Of course, because this is a curriculum adoption, it'll be coming before the board for consideration. So you'll be getting more information about it as well. But I know that they just, that, that work just kind of got wrapped up. It just weren't before the IMC. So I wanted to give Executive Director Melish an opportunity to share some of that and that important point that we recognize. We recognize that there is some learning loss that's occurring right now as a result of re- remote learning. And we know we have to have a recovery plan. OSPI is requiring that we will have a recovery plan. And I was just really pleased to hear that Rich and his team are thinking about that even as we adopt new materials for going forward. So thank you, Rich. And we have uh, uh, Executive Limitation fourteen later on the agenda tonight, which has a lot of TLS in there. So you'll be hearing from Executive Director Melish again. I also wanted to invite our Executive Director of High Schools, who is on the Zoom, Ms. Donna Hood, to talk about some changes that uh, we recently have uh, learned about related to COVID pandemic graduation changes. And also if uh, Executive Director Hood would uh, talk a little bit about the plan that, how we will be serving some struggling high schoolers, nine, twelve, in-person as well. So um, Executive Director Hood, if you could uh, kind of share what you, what, an update on graduation and uh, on what's in store, I believe, next week for some of our high schoolers?
Yeah, I'm happy to. So the State Board of Ed uh, just published today that they are indeed uh, going to be granted the authority to give us the authority to waive graduation requirements. Again, this will be something that we do quite judiciously. The first and primary objective is for us to assist students in actually accruing and earning the credit. And from that point, we will have some authority to individually assess kids and determine whether or not they would have reasonably graduated without, for example, having their education interrupted in this way. So we will be following the rules as they develop and write them. There's about a ten-page document I printed out for myself tonight so I can annotate it, make sense of it, uh, and start talking about it with the principals and our amazing high school guidance counselors. So thankfully, we have a little experience with this from last year. And I think we are very ready and willing and able to help our kids. I think to that end though, and these are very connected in my mind, next Wednesday, we welcome back some seniors who are in need of additional academic support. We expect to have about sixty-eight students at Liberty High School, about eighty-one at Issaquah. Skyline has invited a hundred and ten. And we will have about sixteen at Gibson Eck returning to get some academic support. And we hope um, in that way to begin doing some of that work that will set them back on the right path to graduate and earn the credits that they are currently scheduled in. So it's, it's very, very exciting. And I also want to mention um, that right now, uh, the third of the comprehensive high schools is live streaming an event, um, an athletic event. And this is really quite amazing because we had very limited time to pull this off. We had about ten days uh, from when the governor put us into phase two and we realized we were going to have a season one. My ADs with the assistance of Dave Reynolds in our tech department, the intrepid Dave Reynolds, wherever he is, uh, they have managed to do this. So Issaquah went first on Monday night, streaming a JV game. Volleyball at Skyline went shortly thereafter on the ninth. And right now Danielle Zalinski is streaming an event at Liberty. So it's very exciting that they were able to do this with some incredible support out of our tech team. So I just wanted to mention that too. Lots, lots to be happy and excited about.
Thank you, Donna. Yeah, I had uh, neglected to mention that our high school athletics are back and, and happening. And obviously, the live streaming is a result of the fact that we're very limited on who can be in the stands observing. So it's an opportunity for parents and community members to be able to watch our um, athletic events. So we're figuring this all out.
Might be some folks who maybe aren't comfortable yet being out in public. Certainly, we think about grandparents a lot, that kind of thing. So this is a way for lots of folks to access from home. And um, we just had incredible support from Dave and it's working out very well. So it's exciting.
Thank you for that, Donna. So a lot, a lot is happening. But I think the, the big takeaway that I, that I would want to leave the board with before your public input and that is that, again, there's no segment of learners that we are abandoning. We are going to support, and it's challenging. I don't want to claim that it's not. Where, when you're running essentially side-by-side, parallel school districts, a remote district, a hybrid in-person district as well, and continuing to try to find more and more ways to bring students into the school and onto the campus for in-person support. So there's a lot of challenges, but I've been really proud of folks and how they've stepped up. You know, our teachers have just been amazing. You know, I, I had the opportunity to talk to two staffs this week, a middle school and elementary staff. And I just um, wanted to share with them um, how impressive it's been. If somebody had said to me a year ago, Superintendent Thiele, you're going to turn the entire brick and mortar Issaquah School District into a remote school system. And oh, by the way, we're going to give you the weekend to do it. I, I just, I would have said, you've lost your mind. But the way that we mobilize to get technology out in the hands of students, to train people, the work through the summer, the adoption of a learning management system, the ongoing support, um, and you'll hear some, a little bit more about this tonight when I do my works in progress. But all the PD about how to be a, a remote teacher and everything that our, our staff have done. It's been impressive. And I, I know I've shared before, I've had the opportunity to visit a number of remote classrooms and some activities as well. And, and it is, they've just really done a wonderful job. Now, having said that, I have also had the opportunity to talk to a lot of educators and a lot more students. And just like we heard from our music students earlier tonight, I will say while they appreciate all the efforts and how many of the kids recognize the challenge for their teacher, which how kind of them is that to recognize the, the difficulty that their teachers are having? But almost to a person, they tell me um, they are anxious to be back in our schools and we're anxious to help make that happen for them. So President Weaver, that's what I had in terms of my updates tonight. Of course, we're here to take any questions and I know you were gonna um, take some public input as well.
Okay, well, thank you very much for that. And um, I particularly appreciate the update on remote learning because I know we've, we've heard from members of the public that the board is so focused on getting kids back in school that we're ignoring the remote learners. And I absolutely knew that wasn't true. The board has been focused on bringing kids back, but I knew that the district was doing quite a lot of work to support the remote learners. And so I just wanted to get that out sort of in the public eye. So um, at this point, we will take public input. And I promptly lost it. How did I do that? Oh, there it is. Not used to dealing with paper. This is new. Okay, so um, Stephen, you're going to put the hands up for my Zoom public input. So if you wish to give public input on remote learning or school reopening, raise your remote hand. I will start. And I think I'm gonna go back and forth for the moment while it's even uh, with Glenn Meyer, who should be in person. And please, as I said, two minutes.
Yeah, I'll go fast because my, my two minutes is going to go fast. My name's Glenn Meyer. Uh, I have a son that goes to Issaquah High School. I'm a fifty-one-year resident at Issaquah, so I went through the whole schools. All my kids and my grandkids will be doing the same. This meeting is a bit of uh, I'm a, I'm a frustrated parent. My kid has been out of school almost a year to the date. He's miserable. He misses his friends. Uh, the academics are a joke. Uh, it's busy paperwork. It's time to get these kids back to school. And so I'm imploring our, our board to wrap it up and get her done. And I'm sitting here watching this meeting tonight and my neighbors know I'm here. And I'm getting texts from them watching this meeting. And there's a huge disconnect between the feel-good in this meeting and the population that's out there. I'm watching people drop off. There's two hundred people on here. Here's some of the comments I'm getting. Dear God, people aren't in the meeting to hear puff about school when there's no school. There should be no other discussion tonight except how kid, how to get kids back to school. This is nuts. Are they purposely trying to piss us off? I can't read this one because there's swear words in there, but something to do with ridiculous. The puff piece, and, and I feel sorry because I'm not attacking these kids that were up there. I'm glad they did this. But the puff piece from the kids, look at us. Our kids are thriving in this environment. Talk about a snow job. This is so rude to make the parents wait so long to have public input. We're here to get our schools open. I work for a uh, I work for an essential business. I've, from day one of COVID, I've traveled all over the country. In the last two months, I've been in Arizona, Florida, Indiana, Illinois, and Texas. Their schools are open and mine is not. Open our schools. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Trying to read this. Uh, trying to see somebody I haven't heard from before. Bill Thompson. Are you on the Zoom, Bill?
Yeah, my name's Bill Thompson. Uh, can you guys hear me?
I can't see you.
Okay, sorry.
There you go. Much better.
So my only question is, or my comment is, I think a lot of the teachers are doing an amazing job um, dealing with the remote learning, but a lot aren't. Uh, are we doing anything to hold our teachers more accountable for uh, both the time spent engaging with children and also following up? For example, uh, I know somebody, know somebody whose teacher is constantly at the ski resort while they teach and spends more time offline than online. So that's my question. Uh, are we going to do more to hold the teachers accountable?
Okay, thank you very much for your input. Nate Perera.
Thank you, President Weaver. Um, it's good to be here and see you all in person. It's really kind of refreshing and uh, feels a little foreign. I'm here today to speak to you on behalf of uh, the almost nineteen-hundred parents who are now a member of the ISD Alliance for Kids uh, that has come together since November. We uh, really appreciate the fact that we've got dates set for return for secondary school. So thank you for that. I did want to address uh, communication today that went out from the IEA to teachers and clarify a couple of things that were uh, claimed in there. The email claims that in recent bargaining uh, sessions that the district came uh, wanting to talk about the return of grades four through twelve, which was the direction of the board. And in doing so, was ignoring the needs of students furthest from equity, uh, from educational justice. And why this is um, why this is concerning is the IEA and the teachers' union absolutely has the right to negotiate and bargain on safety conditions and the working conditions of their constituents. They do not have the right to set definitions for which students get to return and which ones are deemed closest to educational justice. That is the work of the board. That is the, the choice of the parents, not of the teachers' union. I'd also like to share a quote with you from a parent that uh, reached out to me this evening. She said, "I can't afford to move. I can't afford private school and my children are crumbling." Who are they to determine which kids are furthest from equity? So we don't know which kids are close to being uh, suicidal, maybe getting abused. Maybe they're getting good grades, but they are just suffering. So I share this with you because I want to, first of all, I want to again, thank the board for setting the dates, but I want to encourage you to stay firm and stay diligent in continuing to get more and more kids back in school. I'd like the district to be prepared to come with an MOU to present to the IEA as soon as possible. I'd also like to thank our teachers because they've been working hard, both in-person and remote. We understand it is hard and it's going to continue to be hard, but they can do it. We have faith. And to the IEA, get back to the table, get it done, and be nimble. Things are changing. Things are changing quick. Teachers have access to vaccinations now. It is time to get it done. No more excuses. Get a deal done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your input. Chris. I don't know Chris's last name, but if you- I don't know Chris's last name, but if you could unmute and turn on your camera and give input.
Uh, I think the host has asked you to start your video. I can do that.
Yes. There you go.
Can you see me?
Yes.
Okay. So I, I think I'll
Have your name, please.
My name is Christopher Gregson. I have three children in Issaquah School District right now. Only one is going part-time.
Okay.
Okay. I think I'll add, based upon another gentleman's comment, that I am a central worker. I go to school, uh, I go to work every single day. I have for the entire time during COVID. And I kind of wrote something down that kind of, uh, I'd like to read to you. So just, uh, I refined it throughout listening to this, and I can only start by stating that this entire content and tone of this meeting takes the wind out of my lungs. It's literally unbelievable that the sheer pain and hurt of a large part of the student body is literally void and absent. It's truly saddening, and I don't think it's reflected of reality. And I just don't understand how you, how we get here. Is this truly not known by the school board? Is it not worthy enough for this, the board to take on head-on and to address? It's literally unbelievable. I hate to provide a counter viewpoint to all the great in-home teaching and pre-canned speeches that were obviously prepared of how great at-home teaching is, but this isn't representative of the entire body of students. There are many students suffering. There are many who are in real trouble and are currently contemplating the unthinkable. What, where is that viewpoint? What's that viewpoint? Isn't that just as relevant and important to pre-canned and bring to the conversation? Why wasn't that pre-prepared and brought alongside with all the great things that we're doing? I don't understand. I just don't understand. This rings as pre-canned, and it rings as setup? The real question really is, is how do we all feel when we're trending dead last on what the rest of the nation and the rest of the world is doing for their kids? The rest of the world used science to shut down and is now using science to do what's best for their children. Science was good then. Why is it ignored now? We're on a fast track toward being an outlier for conversation in the news if we continue this trend. What are we gonna say?
I need you to wrap.
Excuse me?
I need you to wrap. You've hit two minutes.
What are our facts that we're standing behind that proves that the entire world is wrong and that we're right? And that's, that's my wrap.
Okay, thank you very much for your input. I'm gonna take the last four hands on the Zoom, and then we're going to move on. So, except I just lost them. They're there. Jennifer L.
Hello. Um, yeah, I have a few things on my mind. First of all,
Can I get your full name, please?
Yes, it's Jennifer Leishman.
Thank you.
Yes, so I have students at Skyline and at Sunny Hills. First of all, I'd like to thank the educators that received the early vaccination to help with safely expediting in-person learning. Secondly, I'd like to maybe point to a school district that's been open for quite a while, Mead District and the Eastern Washington side. If maybe we could look into researching how they've, how they've operated, how they've kept everybody safe, just feedback from their district. Thirdly, I'd like to address the, the gap that's widening. My son has an IEP. He has struggled to learn, not only with learning difficulties, but, um, like, we're in the minority. Our, our ethnicity is a minority and already has like a 16% graduation rate. You know, I moved to the east side for these schools to help him. I heard it was great with, you know, helping kids with disabilities and whatnot. So I mean, he's already at a disadvantage, but so are a lot of kids with IEPs and 504s, like it, you know, because his peers are in school. He's got friends in private schools who are still learning. So we have kids at the same age where the gap is widening between kids with money, kids without money. You know, they're still learning. They can get the private tutors. They can do the pods. So I mean, there are, you know, they're still advancing where kids who can't afford this extra help are not. So they are getting behind. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your input. Okay, Jamie Street.
Hello. My name is Jamie Street. I am a language arts teacher at Issaquah Middle School, and I also have a daughter at Issaquah High School. And I'm very excited to say that I got my first shot yesterday. I'm looking forward to being fully vaccinated. Just wanted to bring our attention, as we do prepare to move our secondary students back to the classroom, I ask that we be proactive instead of reactive. At the last board meeting, it was communicated that teaching simultaneously seemed to be the model that was working best for the research that had been done. And simultaneous for me means teaching to the 19 students that fill the 19 desks that have been strategically placed six feet apart in my classroom, while also live-streamed via Zoom to the rest of my 12 students for my language arts class of 32, for the five different class periods I'll teach throughout the day. I try to envision how I'm going to be an engaging, effective teacher in this model. I envision eager hands being raised in my classroom, little yellow hands on the Zoom screen, and how do I make both groups of students feel like their questions matter? Will I be frantically typing answers to the comments in the Zoom chat and bouncing back to an in-person question? Will I be able to facilitate group work between my in-person and my remote students? Will all 19 of my in-person students have access to a computer so that they can then access Canvas? Will I sound as garbled as our board tonight while I'm teaching all day long under a mask? Please don't confuse with what I'm saying, as I don't want to be in person, because that's not, that's not it. I don't believe that I can't do it. I just question how I'm going to do it and who is going to show me how to do it well? Or am I going to have to flounder around and make weeks of mistakes, which then results in my students losing weeks of content? I am making a plea that secondary teachers have quality training that equips us to teach simultaneously before we are required to pivot once again without proper training. I also understand that this model isn't as simple as a phrase as get it done. If in fact simultaneous teaching is the best model according to your research, please provide training from real-life people who have experience on how to make this model work well, so that educators don't feel like we are constantly drowning in this tumultuous sea. Please not offer a
Two minutes. I need you to finish.
I will. A low-quality reactive book study three weeks after we have pivoted to simultaneous personal remote teaching by providing educators with quality trains from folks who know how to teach simultaneously effectively, you will be preventing the reactive conundrum we have constantly found ourselves in since March 12, 2020. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you for your input. Jennifer Harrington.
Hello. Hi. I just wanted to speak a tiny bit to the equity question that was raised earlier on for the meeting. A little background about myself. I'm a registered nurse that's worked on the front lines of this pandemic since day one. I've worked there before we even had the hope of a vaccine, and I'm extremely pleased that those in Issaquah have had that, um, starting this week. I'm thrilled that they're having it. I also have three children in Issaquah School District, all with IEPs. None have had in-person services this year. Many of them, including my most high-need ones, are home alone while I work through it. Couple dates I'd like to throw out. This week marks the one year of our children being out of school. Another date that was announced today from Jay Inslee is that April 1st is going to be the day when 9,000 people can pack into a Mariners game, and it may actually beat our fourth graders and up back to school, which is just infuriating at this point in time. I am asking us, again, to come up with a better plan, more than just hoping and coming up with everything. The idea that we're trying to prioritize those with furthest from educational equity without coming up with a way to actually make it happen in a realistic sense. You can't just take children on IEPs, most of whom are mainstreamed, and all of a sudden self-contain them. Special ed law doesn't work like that. It's why our special ed kids haven't been served in person since the beginning of the pandemic. My child doesn't even want to learn any better by putting them in a room by themselves with a teacher, even though that help would be greatly, greatly appreciated. They need to be next to neurotypical peers to be watching them take notes, to be watching them pay attention and to learn. That's how a lot of these kids learn. So if their other peers are not back in person, they cannot be back in person in any meaningful way. So if the difficulty at this point in the hang-up is they're wanting to prioritize those from educational equity, and we've already discussed sending perhaps 25% back at a time, may I suggest those that are on IEPs or that are having more trouble are prioritized to come back more often than the other ones, so that they're back either four days a week or something like that. But please, come up with creative solutions instead of saying, no one's going back, only the kids that are furthest from educational equity. Can we please come up with
Two minutes. Thank you. Thank you very much. Mary Segesta.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm Mary Segesta. I'm a parent of a freshman at Issaquah High School. I too would like to talk about educational justice. In last month's board meeting, the board mentioned specifically that educational justice had been achieved for all of those that you defined as being furthest away from educational justice. However, what we're hearing tonight is from several parents is that that may not actually be true, and so it might require quite a bit of an evaluation going on. That said, I do want to make it known that it is up to the parent, not the teacher, to decide whether or not their kids need to be in the classroom. I do not want any teacher telling me whether my student is furthest away from educational justice or they're not. I am that person to make that decision. And the further this goes on, remote teaching, no, it's not remote learning, it's remote teaching, the further it goes on, every single student in the Issaquah School District will be furthest away from educational justice. Every one of their peers is either in private school or are in districts across not only our great state, but across this country are back in school. New York, Chicago, Miami Dade, LA, they've all gone back to school, and we have not. We're still counting Ds and Fs. And to change the graduation requirements because we can't bring kids back to school is appalling. We need to be setting our kids up for success and for their futures, and getting them back in the school is the way to do that full-time. If we can get people back into the stadiums, we can get kids back into the classrooms. Get it done. Get it done now. It's not difficult. It's not hard. Just open the doors. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Okay, and the last one I'm going to take is Mrs. Gordon.
Hi, I am Megan Gordon, and I teach fifth grade. And I, like you, I also am so happy that we can get vaccinated. I got my first vaccine, and I want to get our kiddos back in the building. However, I'm quite concerned about the idea of our fourth and fifth graders being lumped in with sixth through 12th graders as young adults and being brought back in the live stream model, because I can't see how this would work for the style of teaching that we do in an elementary school classroom, because I am not going to be an effective teacher as a lecturer. That's not how these young kids learn. And I know that such a big part of bringing the kids back is considering their social and emotional health. And I know that the kids in my classroom, a lot of them that had to select remote because of their family circumstance or health conditions, are not choosing it because they don't want to be back in the classroom with their peers. And the idea of them sitting on a screen, looking at a screen through a screen while their friends are in the classroom learning together, that that is not going to help their social, emotional health. I have a feeling that's going to just destroy them and cause a lot of strife within their families, and that is an equity issue. These kids aren't going to be able to get what they need, because if I'm trying to live-stream while I'm also teaching in the classroom, I'm not serving either of those populations. I'm not helping my remote kids, and I'm not helping my hybrid kids. And on top of that, I'm now doing the work of two teachers. And I don't, I can't do that as a teacher and be effective as in my job, which I care deeply about, or in the rest of my life. And I really hope that you can kind of do some creative problem-solving to figure out how we can get these kids back into the classroom in a way that is safe and healthy, and most importantly, what is best for them. Because I really, I, I don't think that live streaming is that, that decision. It needs to be something that actually works with the way that we teach children and the way that children learn. And fourth and fifth graders are not young adults. A nine-year-old to an 11-year-old is not the same as a 17-year-old high school student. So we really need to think about how to serve them. Thank you so much for your time.
All right, thank you for your input. And with that, we're going to move away from public input and questions or comments from the board. I think I can see all of you, although Harlan threw about 18 layers of Plexiglas. Do I have any questions or comments? Really? Nothing?
Well, President Weaver, if it helps at all, I've got a couple of things I could share. Well, maybe the board can have some think time. That's an old teacher strategy there. I did want to point out just a couple of things. We have actually provided MOUs to the Issaquah Education Association for both a four, five return in-person option of hybrid and a six through 12. And we are eager to have those conversations with our labor partners about how we can do this. And, and I want to be clear, we're not naive. We know that a live streaming approach, any kind of hybrid approach, is not going to be a substitute for what we all experienced over 12 months ago when we were in our classrooms. But I want to be clear, there's a lot of reasons that I believe we need to provide an in-person option for our students, some of which we heard from parents tonight about the effects that the isolation of, uh, remote learning is having on their families. And I think we should not let, you know, there's an old expression, don't let, you know, we, we should not try to perfect this system, and we, we need to be able to move forward. And it will be clunky, just like tonight's board meeting is clunky. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't try it, because, and, and I recognize, we are not going to cover the material and be able to teach in a way that we once could. But the importance, a big important part of this is allowing students, one, to step back into those schools. It felt different for some of you tonight, I suspect, stepping back into this room. We need to get back and establish our routines. Students need to have an opportunity to get out of their houses, and we can do this. We've done it with preschool all the way up through third grade. We've done it through, with childcare. We've done it with special, uh, students who receive, uh, special services. So I am absolutely confident that we can do this in a way that will keep, um, everybody safe and will not result in, in increase in community spread of the virus. So I just want to be clear about that. We're not naive, and I also wanted to point out, we have been talking to the school districts, like the Mead School District and the White River School District. In fact, I was in a call last week with 16 school districts in the state of Washington that have in-person learning at the secondary level. So we are asking those questions, and we're learning a lot. And I will agree with the teacher who said, we need to provide, I believe it was the middle school teacher from IMS, as much quality professional development about what a live streaming would look like and how you would do it the most effectively. And we will continue to support that as we go forward. But I, I guess I want to say, as the superintendent, day one, when this pandemic hit, I said, we gotta give people grace. I'll give our teachers grace. I know it won't be perfect. But again, if you talk to our families and you talk to students, by and large, they're going to tell you, whatever we can give them is an in-person option, they are happy to take. They're not expecting perfection, and I know we can do it. There are teachers in this county, all the way down to second grade, who are live-streaming their classes right now. And I have an absolute belief in our amazing Issaquah teachers, that if anybody can do it, they can do it. It won't be easy, but I just, uh, I just hope we don't lose sight of, this has to do with a lot of things, not just acquiring academic content and skills, but also, we talk about the social, emotional well-being and but also we talk about the social emotional well-being and health of our students. I think one of the best things we could do for them and for our families is get an opportunity for all students who want it to be able to come in person. I just, I wanted to say that as I listened to that public input. Hopefully that gave you enough wait time.
Yeah, I think you bring up a really good point. I was really excited about having an in-person board meeting until I tried to think about, well, wait, I've got people zooming. I've got people live streaming. I've got people in purpose, in person. What's going to be up on the screen? What's going to be on my screen? How is this going to work? And I got a little panicky and I called and I said, can you guys just walk me through it? And I totally understand how the teachers are thinking. I, I don't see how I'm going to teach kids in the room with kids on the computer. I spoke to a neighbor of mine who is, teaches in one of our middle schools. And she said that she was very uncomfortable about it until she talked to one of her siblings who teaches in person in Texas. And they livestreamed and she explained how it worked and how they did it. And my neighbor was like, oh, okay, that sounds good. I can do that. We should go back to school. And I'm thinking to myself, how do I get the other thousand teachers in the district to have a sibling or someone that they can talk to that says, no, 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 really, you can do this. And, and I totally agree. Obviously, we're going to give teachers PD on how to do it. We're not going to throw them cold. But, but I think once people understand how it works and once they try it, and there are going to be a few mistakes and a few bumps at the beginning. And then, and then it's going to be like we've been doing it for a long time. So I think, I think those are important points.
You know, one last point I will make too is because I've had an opportunity to talk to a lot of teachers, including some Issaquah teachers who have come in person with their students. And almost to a person, what they say is, I was scared. I was nervous about it at first. But seeing the joy on my students' faces, more than anything alleviated some of that anxiety and that, that nervousness that I felt. And that has just been a common report from teachers who have had the opportunity to work with students in person. So I just want to, you know, I think we can be brave and we can do this and it will benefit our students tremendously.
Oh, wait, I saw Sydney or Marty? Harlan. Okay, Harlan.
So you know, we've had SIP meetings and it was very clear and consistent through the Center for Educational. Is it on? Yeah, okay. I can't help that. So my concern is it's very consistent across all 15 of our elementary schools that parents say that their biggest concern is the lack of social emotional learning that they're getting and just that whole social emotional development for our students. We need to be honest so that it's not happening on Zoom and it's not ever going to happen on Zoom. And so I think that there's that developmental need that every parent is recognizing to some degree. And we're not going to do it that way. So my challenge to the district is, we've heard pretty clearly from the teachers. So why aren't we doing PD right now for doing this hybrid teaching? Because I don't see how you're going to pivot to turn the system on in 18 days from now if we're not doing the teaching right now. So it's incumbent on us to do that. So I think one of the things that when we've seen for neighboring districts, when they went through early on and we're going through with teachers and brought in public health to talk through things and the mitigation strategies, there was a lot more comfort. I think there will be a lot more comfort in our staff if we were doing PD now and, and doing that stuff. So those are the barriers that we can control. So there's a lot of things that we can't control, like necessarily negotiations and even dates. But what we can control is when we deliver and like have high-quality PD and show them the technology and integration and have them practice and trial that. And there's no reason why we shouldn't be doing that today.
I'm going to ask that we not do that, please. But I appreciate your enthusiasm.
So, so my question is, what is the barrier from the administration? What is the barrier from us doing that like immediately? Because I feel like we've been talking about the live stream thing since January and it's now March. So I want to hold the district accountable for this.
I appreciate your comments, Dr. Gallinger. And there, there has been some PD. It hasn't been directed at live stream. In fact, we've had some ongoing PD, but mostly around the transition initially was about preparing teachers to remote teach. So live stream and, and we don't have an agreement to live stream. I want to be clear about that. It's something that the district has shared that we believe is the best choice to move forward. But to your point about starting now, I think one obstacle, you know, we always have to carve out time to provide PD for teachers who are working during the day. But other than that, I, you know, I don't, we're not opposed to that. And I, you know, we are, we are ready and there is, and in our earlier MOUs, we built in, as you'll recall, some designated days for that to happen prior to the students actually returning. I think we had to give seven days notice and then three days of asynchronous time while the teachers were, were getting some of that PD and some of that preparation time for their new classes. So we, I, you know, we can certainly talk about what the plan is in terms of having PD available sooner. I don't know that off the top of my head, Dr. Director Gallinger, but I hear your point about let's go now, let's start now. But we do have some limitations and we have to work with our principals in terms of to make sure we, we can cover the classes if the teachers need to be removed and, and to be able to receive the PD. I don't know a lot about live streaming. I'll be honest. I'm live streaming kind of right now. It's not some, a way that I ever had to teach when I was in the classroom. But I, again, and we had a group that went out and we took teachers with us to White River so that they could observe what live streaming looked like. I know that they partnered with us in the development of a plan for how we could do that. So, because I believe it's teacher to teacher, peer to peer is a powerful learning approach and teaching approach as well. So I think the only thing holding us back right now is we've been trying, you know, we're trying to get an agreement as well as we've been, had a lot of other demands on the system. First, in terms of preparing teachers to be remote teachers and then helping our K3 teachers in that transition. But your point is well made. We, we need to be moving forward. I would hope that we could join together with our association and our teachers. And we would all agree that we need to use this critical time that we have right now over the next couple of weeks to get ourselves as prepared as possible for that return. And I believe live streaming is the most practical way, really the only way that you can do this. That's why we've seen it play out that way in just about every school system that has secondary students back. There's some aspect of live streaming, particular systems that are on a size of ours, with schools the size of ours. So I don't have a direct answer to why we haven't started today, but I hear the question. We're going to have further conversation as we talk about EOL 14 tonight too, about PD as well. There's a lot in there about the PD shift that we made last spring and over the summer. We have to do something similar to that now as we move forward to hopefully be able to get our kids back in the, in, in classrooms in person in the last quarter of the school year here.
So I just think that, you know, we need to be, if we believe that, if you believe that this is the, the approach we need to take, then we're missing, we're, we're sacrificing time while negotiations are ongoing. And so we can be training the trainers right now. I want to know, what are we doing on Wednesdays? That's the time that we own. I mean, our kids aren't getting learning on Wednesdays. So we should have better be doing something with that time. So it's sitting up here, it's exceedingly frustrating. I know negotiations have been a challenge for the past year. But what I don't see from my purview is progress being made on getting us to the destination. And I think that there is a lot of things that we as a district are not doing. And so those teachers are absolutely right. We're not delivering on those things and that's the stuff that we have to own. And sure, we can use the negotiations as an excuse. But in my mind, until we're offering these things and they're saying, nope, we have negotiated a deal, we're not doing the training. If that happens, that's a different conversation. But to my knowledge, we're not offering the training for them and that's a problem for me.
I think we've got some staff.
I was going to say, we've got two there.
Probably know more, more about it than I do. Yeah.
So I'll let you guys fight it out.
Thank you, Superintendent Thiele, for the opportunity to run up here real quick. Josh Almy, Deputy Superintendent. Just today, we sewed up a focus group, live streaming focus, focus group that was made up of five administrators and five IEA members. Just kudos to that group for all the hard work that they did. Not only did we engage with, you know, lengthy Q and A session with the White River School District, went on a field trip there. We just submitted that document to both the district bargaining team and to the IEA bargaining team with the recommendations. One key recommendation is to train a group of teachers at each building to, so that they can train the trainer, so to speak. We are ready to move on that as soon as possible. Executive Director Morse has secured some time with the White River School District and a middle school where we can get teachers there to see, along with principals, live streaming in action. And one of the people on our committee is also one of our Tectosis. And he's been doing a lot of work as well with Rich and his team. So Rich, maybe you can speak a little bit to some of the work you guys have been doing.
I would note that one of our support staff, Nancy Francis, is over there, the one cleaning up the podium in between our speakers.
Yeah, I want to, I just wanted to note a couple of things. I mean, it really, one of the several things that are happening around professional development. So today, this morning at sunset, we had a dry run to try to test out kind of what an elementary live streaming could be like. So we had, we had some coaches, Toses, working on, on coming up with that model and developing that. We've had, again, like I said, we had one of our Toses on this committee so that he could bring back what they found in, in the districts they went and looked at. And we also, myself and Director Don Wallace meet weekly with our CCS district partners, all of whom have been either already starting the live streaming process or exploring it. And we're sharing videos and resources that we're creating so that when we get to professional development, we have resources. We're ready to go to, to train those teachers. And so our focus so far has been with each transition of bringing new students in, there's some training that we've been doing to, to, to address the needs of those students and those teachers at that time. And, but we continue to try to be prepared for that next phase. And since live streaming has been coming up and the, we have been gearing up for that PD. So as, as soon as we get the green light, we can begin doing that, that professional development. So.
And I saw Jody, but she went away. Am I going to assume that they covered it?
No.
No.
Yes, I thank you, Director Weaver. I just wanted to share that as soon as it came up as part of our thinking in with fourth and fifth grade, I reached out to Executive Director Melish to give a heads up that we need to start planning for PD for our staff. And then both Rich and I reached out to Mercer Island, which is one of the districts, around the trainings that they provided and materials and how it was working. Because they're actually doing that, I like to say simultaneous or concurrent teaching with live streaming, second through fifth grade.
Great, thank you. Other questions, comments from the board?
Sure. Yep, thanks. I guess there's a couple of things on my mind. None of these are going to, I think, be a question at the end. It's all comment for me tonight, I think. I think first, I, I really think it's important, the piece we did at the beginning in celebrating the good things that are happening in this district every day. And I think it's really important, the student voice part of that and our focus on student voice. And we certainly have had our wonderful student representatives each board meeting, some who have communicated their struggles and their pain and some who've communicated what's working well for them. And I think that that's really an important part of, of this work is to have that voice. I think having the, the music program and maybe only if for me as a board member to continue to deal with this very difficult time. And it's really important to have that reminder of why we're doing this work and why it's so important to keep nourishing these young folks and, and the great stuff that they produce. And so I know I am incredibly fed by, by those parts of our agenda. I would also say that if we look at the, the beauty of what you saw in our vaccination clinic is, is about our community and it's about moving forward. But it's also about how, how do we get back to school? How do we get back to an in-person environment and a, and a critical component of that? And, and I recognize that we have long meetings and we have them frequently. And so it's hard for folks to know all the conversation. But just for me, it's really important to, to restate that in-person opportunities for our students is, is critical and that we haven't wavered. I haven't wavered. We haven't wavered in, in continuing to expand those. I do think it's important to talk about this point of, of equity and, and the board's definition of, of how we've been trying to, to stagger the return of folks to kiddos to in-person opportunity. And I guess for me, it's important to say, I, I think we have done the best we can with what we have had to work with to get the most at need back into school. I have heard no one on this board proclaim victory on that point. In fact, this next piece of getting every student an opportunity to return is actually how we are going to provide for the next group of folks, kids who haven't been getting the, that in-person opportunity, which are large groups across multiple grade bands. And so I think it's really important that we understand that each step in this process is how we provide opportunities for kids in every situation to be back in school. And so it's not an either or, but we certainly, I, I think it's critical that we move forward now with an all having an opportunity because that is how we make sure that we close some of these, these gaps that we're seeing. So I say all that just because I have to take a breath sometimes. I get a little riled up. So I, I think, I think Harlan makes a great point. I think what we've seen is when our educators have an opportunity to see, feel, experience, just like Suzanne of running the meeting here in person, we will get past some of that anxiety. So I think the sooner the better for, for, for PD to move forward as, as I continue to be wholly committed to moving back to an all-student opportunity as soon as possible.
Marty.
I always want Sydney to go before me because then she says things such, so much more eloquently than I would. I would say one of the things I wrote down just so I wouldn't forget it, we have three options. We can force everyone, fourth through 12th, to stay remote. We can allow students and family to choose which modality works best for their family. Or we can force everyone back in the classroom. And at this point, only one of those choices seems like it's going to be a clear, right decision. And that's to provide an opportunity for families to choose which one works best for them and providing that. So that means we have to get back into the classroom. And I know we have asked so much of our teachers. There are so many industries which have had to re-figure out, how do you do what you're supposed to do? How do you accomplish your mission? And it's not easy and we know we're asking them yet again. And that is, that is the difficulty of living through a pandemic unlike anything we've seen in a century. And that's where we're still at. And you know, I'm looking back at my email. My gosh, it was a year ago today that Superintendent Thiele called my house and said, I think I need to close school. And like, what is your decision for closing it? Because whatever that is, it's going to be the basis of why you opened them again. And it was basically, we were waiting to hear from public health. We were trying to be measured. And so a year ago tomorrow is where we made the announcement that that would be the last day of school. And it's heartbreaking for me that those kids went to school not knowing that at the end of the day, when they got on the bus, they would not be back in that school building for a year. And I'm sorry, it's a long time. And I think every single one of us, for the most part, have been in a building in the past year that is not their home. So I'm asking you, can you let our kids get back to the building that's not their home to do their learning? That's all I want. And, and I am so excited to hear that we are investigating at how other districts are doing it. I agree, as soon as we can start getting some type of training in front of teachers, the better, the more comfort that they will feel, the more questions they can ask us to make sure that if we, you know, get it in front of a smaller group of teachers so they can ask the questions so that you can develop a, a learning that will work for a larger number of teachers. Because those teachers will ask, ask you questions you're not thinking of. And if you can have a smaller group ask you those questions, when you get it in front of those larger groups of, our, what, eight hundred, nine hundred secondary teachers or fourth through 12th, it will help when it gets to the time to, to teach more and more of them. And to those teachers that are listening, I heard all of those fears. And it is very much like, what, how, how complex is this again? We're asking you to pivot yet again. And so I, I hear that struggle. And so that's why we are up here saying, we're going to work and we're asking the district to start working now to make sure that we can do this as easily as possible. And I think that we have learned so much since even the beginning of the year. And as we brought in K one, K one, I know it upset a lot of people. This happened to my kid, this happened to my kid. I was so encouraged at our SIP meetings, hearing how our teachers were trying to be so welcoming of those students that they got, that have had to go through changing their teacher, that do have classrooms of twenty-seven, twenty-eight students. And it's hard and they're making it work because they care about our kids. I think every single one of our teachers cares about their kids, cares about our students and is in this for the mission. So I think it's with us being better prepared. So K one wasn't beautiful. Second, third, I think it wasn't, I mean, we didn't get nearly the number of emails. I think moving to this, yeah, it might be challenging, but if we can do it four or five, we'll figure some stuff out and we'll get those kids back into the classroom. And I'm so thankful, I want to publicly say, Dr. Gallinger, if it was not for you, this week would not have happened with our teachers getting vaccinated. I don't think the public knows how much time you took with our staff to make that happen in the midst of everything else you do for our Washington State School Board Association, for the job that you do, which is literally saving children's lives. And so thank you to the staff in, in Jake's and Martin's group, the CFO, our COO, all those staff members that made today happen, made this week happen so our teachers could get vaccinated. So we do care about this pandemic, we care about their safety. And I think, I just want to say personally, thank you. That has met the world to thousands of people now.
I agree. I mean, I think the only road forward is to put kids back into school or to have the opportunity to be back in the school. I mean, the governor is moving the state into phase three of reopening. More and more is reopening. We need to reopen our schools and put kids back in and give them the opportunity to be there with their teachers and their peers. I mean, I, I do know it's hard going back and kind of reinventing education again, but we have amazing teachers and they have done this multiple times. And I believe in their ability to do this again with the support of the district, the, the Toses, the instructional coaches to help the teachers learn quickly how to make the best of live streaming. Yes, there will be challenges. And yes, I think the teachers and the students will figure it out and they'll be working together. And this gives the students the opportunity to be there with their peers. It gives the teachers the opportunity to work with their peers to figure out how to make this work. And I just think there's no other way but to move forward with putting our kids back in school.
And I know the whole issue of PD and training feels like we're putting the cart before the horse if we don't have an agreement with the union. But at the same time, I think with even a little bit of PD, there are so many fears that would be calmed. Just in one of the meetings we had with staff where we talked about live streaming, and I was thinking, well, how would a teacher manage all that? And Josh and Donna both threw out a handful of, you know, handy live stream tips. Well, you have, you know, Zoom buddies and you do this and you do that. And within five minutes of listening to them, I thought, oh, okay, now I understand how a teacher would manage that. And, and so we could, we could calm people down a lot with a little bit of PD, I think. And I know, I know it's hard to find the time. I know it seems like putting the cart before the horse, but I really think it would be helpful.
Or at least make sure that the teachers know that the district is prepared to support them and train them on how to do this. I think that would alleviate a lot too versus feeling like I'm moving into this all on our, on my own. The more that we can communicate, the better.
I think it needs to be more than that. I think it needs to be more concrete and tangible. I mean, if we're, we're ten days away from that, ten school days away from that March twenty-fifth date. And so when I hear an executive editor get up and talk about how like we're starting the process and we're looking at it, that doesn't build confidence for me. And so if I am a staff member, listening to that, I wouldn't have confidence. So it needs to be much more tangible than we're putting a plan together. At this point, with this close on the horizon, we should be ready to go. Like we should be ready to go tomorrow if we're going to expect our teachers to really pivot and do that in ten school days. So I, I literally wasn't joking. I may think if we're, if that's truly the dates, then it should be, we should be able to offer up opportunities for them to be learning what we're expecting them to do. And I think it's unfair of us to expect that if we're truly not ready to go as a system. And I just want us to be honest and transparent with where we are. Because I don't know that even sitting here. And I know I missed executive session, so I get that. But I don't, nothing that I've heard so far tonight makes me feel like we as a system are ready to flip the switch on March twenty-fifth.
I heard two things. One, first of all, Executive Director Melish, you have the green light. I heard a request for the green light. The green light is publicly given. I don't normally do that. And it's a point well made. I think we're actually further along than we're able to articulate. But I, until we can articulate that, I, I get it. So we've got work to do. We recognize the timeline is moving quickly. I've not had anyone tell me we, we, the ISD couldn't be ready to return our four or five on the twenty-fifth, the date that the board has set as our goal. I, I recognize it's a heavy lift and this has been good input for us to hear. And we do want to reassure our teachers and provide them the opportunities. And I, I agree with Director, our President Weaver as well, that sometimes I think we make these things bigger in our minds than they actually have to be. And then you hear just a few things like, I was having a conversation with another superintendent today who shared with me that this is kind of the Zoom buddy thing. Because we also heard that when you are live streaming, you have to be very mindful of your students that are in the Zoom or Teams, whatever system you're using. And one of the fears we heard was, well, how will I know when a student in there raises their hand or something? It's as simple as designating one of the students in the class to help you monitor your Zoom. And that is a common practice that teachers have used. Not, not in that sense, but we've always had student helpers that, that would help us with do things. And frankly, students often, it was a joy for them. They raise their hand to be the student helper, to help the teacher. So there are some, some tips and strategies and I, we just got to communicate that better. And we've got to get on that heavy work of reassuring some of those teachers out there that they can do it.
I, I need that because if I want to be pushing the system and saying to the community, hey, we're, we want to go, we're ready to go, blah, 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 then I need to be seen. I need to see the confidence that we're ready to go. And so.
Yeah, we've got some work to do. I, I, point, point well taken, Director Gallinger.
Anything else from the board?
Okay, we're going to move on to something fun. This is nice. We've had two fun things tonight. We are opening in September, a new middle school, or I'm sorry, in August, a new middle school and a new high school. And these are on the agenda as separate, did I say high school? I did. Oh, my gosh.
We've got a little bit more work to do on that front.
I, I really want to. No, we are opening a new middle school and a new elementary school. And this is on the agenda as two separate items. But I have been informed that actually, Principal, Planning Principal McKee and Planning Principal Terracoyal want to give this presentation together. And we are going to talk about possible names for our new schools. And generally, our practice has been to discuss the possibilities at one meeting and vote on them at the next meeting. So I am assuming that somebody is going to find them.
Coming in here.
Coming in, there's one.
There's the other.
Hi.
Hello.
Take it away, ladies.
All right, well, Principal Coil, is she on the line? Are you able to share the presentation we created?
I am waiting for the host to enable my ability to share, but I, I have voice now.
Okay. While, while we're getting her permissions to share her screen, I'll just introduce myself. My name is Erin McKee and I'm the current principal at Maywood Middle School and Planning Principal for Middle School Six.
Good evening, Superintendent Theeley, Cabinet, School Board members and the rest of the Isaguas School District community. I'm Terracoyal. I am the excited principal of Elementary sixteen.
And we are, we decided since we're just really collaborative people, as you'll, you'll come to find out with all the work we're doing to plan these new beautiful schools, we decided to present together because the processes are the same. I do want to give a shout out to the Middle School Six core team members, who I believe are tuned in to this Zoom call. Thank you, core team. Can't do this work without you. And I've heard the same from Principal Coil. I do want to share that these, these educators I get to work with are just incredible and super dedicated, have such an incredible growth mindset. And then I do want to share also that my last visit to Middle School Six site, which is a construction site, was just amazing. There's so much progress that happens between my visits. I was there to identify places for security cameras. So just kind of thinking through where kids might be naughty, which is part of my job and that's okay. But what the, the most special part of my visit on Monday was going to the fifth floor and seeing the beautiful, large windows from the library overlooking Squawk Mountain, Poopoo Point and Tiger Mountain, just absolutely incredible. This is such a unique building and I'm, I'm appreciative to all the people behind this project.
Erin, I too would like to thank my core team, dedicated professionals that are working hard every day to maximize instruction for students in this unique experience, while also putting in the effort to make Elementary sixteen the most amazing school that we can make it. I was at our site as well and some exciting ah-hahs I've had. One, we've ordered our student furniture and we've ordered it, it seemed so early, but it's not because it comes from Germany. So that was an aha I had, didn't know that fact. And then while on the rooftop, hanging out, kind of looking at the surrounding area and just admiring this amazing piece of property that we were able to inquire, I watched a coyote for some time mousing in the field right behind the school, searching for its dinner. So just a really picturesque area.
Okay, I believe this is my, I'll take the first part here, right? Principal Coil, there are guiding, there are guiding regulations and procedures that Principal Coil and I have followed in terms of how do we name a school? And how do I identify a, a school mascot? So I, I do want to give you a little bit of background for the public. I'm sure the board knows these regulations and procedures. But here, here are some of our processes. We've, we've visited the school many times. We've worked with our core team frequently. And we've done some research around what are our school names in our district, near our school district, in the state, outside of the state. We narrowed down some options and you can imagine, this is such a long, long list. We narrowed down some options and we created a survey ranked, a weighted ranked survey for our future families that we will be serving next year. So they were able to provide input back in February. And so now we've been able to narrow them down. So we will be presenting our narrowed down list to the school board tonight. And we anticipate and hope very much so that the board will make a decision by the following board meeting on the twenty-fifth, because we are anxious to start up our PTSAs. We're anxious to, you know, get, I'm anxious to, to put some beautiful letters on my gym floor and, and just create some spirit wear so we can have this kind of shared identity and community among our new student body. So that's the school name process. I'll hand it over to Principal Coil to talk more about mascot.
Thanks, Principal McKee. So our school mascot and logos, we followed the regulations six, nine, seven, two. And it was very important for Erin and I to stay consistent and really lockstep in this process. So our core team reviewed all the Isaguas School District mascots and brainstorm mascot options. The core teams then narrowed down the mascots to three to five options. And then following the final boundary review meeting, the final options were sent to the students for a vote back in February. Something to note, we're a little behind what our typical new schools have for a timeline. So typically, this has been done in like November, following the boundary review the prior year. But our boundary review got bumped due to COVID, as we've heard a lot about tonight. So we, we're kind of in a holding pattern. So we're kind of getting a late start to this game, which then takes us into our school colors. School colors were due by February sixteenth and.
Oh, February first.
I'm sorry, what did I say?
That's okay. You're doing great.
She's got sixteen on the brain.
First, let's get, let's get a date right. All right, so Principal McKee, you want to talk about why that February first?
Sure. Yeah, just, I think it's especially apt for the secondary level. But I do just want to say one more thing about the mascot. And maybe you said it and maybe I missed it, but we are seeking board, board final approval tonight on our mascots. I know for Middle School Six, the choice for our mascot, which will be revealed soon, was really overwhelming by the student body and I want to honor their voice in that process. Okay, on to school colors. So considering our condensed timeline and, you know, kind of hoping for some miracles to happen here in the next couple of weeks and months, we, we really did need to identify school colors. And so we developed quite a few ideas in our core team in collaboration with other school personnel. After we studied the school colors of every single ISD school, we didn't want to repeat or overdo or, you know, go a direction that didn't make sense for our students. So lots of discussion, lots of research and review. And I know on the E sixteen core team and that Middle School Six core team, we narrowed down our color choices to either two or three. We presented those color options to cabinet leadership. And we did make a final determination, which I know the architects and contractors and capital projects, folks that I'm working with, were very pleased that we came to that decision at that time. Because it really has allowed, I can speak for Middle School Six, it really has allowed me to, to make some decisions to, to kind of elevate that school pride and identity within the actual school building itself. Had we not come to that decision at that time, the school would probably look very neutral or would have some contrasting colors going on. So maybe more than you needed to know about school colors, but Principal Coil and I are feeling really good about that. We will share those colors with you here today as well. But we are not seeking board approval at this time on the colors.
All right, elementary school names. I feel like we need a drum roll or something. So it was important to the core team that our name was not common to other school names in our close vicinity, in our district or in our area. Within ISD neighboring school districts, the team also wanted to honor the natural landscape of the school site and its surroundings. So our name options were very long, like we said earlier. And we really had to tick it down to the five options that we have presented in front of you. So we have Cedar Trail Elementary. Our school is surrounded by cedar trees and amazing trails to explore. Lake Highlands Elementary, our school is positioned between the beautiful Lake Samamish and the very popular Isaguas Highlands. Mountain View Elementary, our school has gorgeous mountain views from every location. Samamish Elementary, our school is located in the heart of the Samamish Plateau. We did check with the city of Samamish mayor who checked with. We did check with the city of Samamish mayor who checked with the attorney and it was okay to use that name. Scenic Elementary, our school has beautiful scenic views from each location. I will tell you that our parents were very consistent, as were our students that you'll see on our mascot. Mountain View was a landslide with 50% of the overall votes placing it in the top slot. And if it wasn't their first choice, it was usually the second choice. I also like to mention that our core team's popular choice among all members was Mountain View as well. When we went to the site, our very first time, we hadn't discussed names. Maybe a little chatter of like thinking about what it could possibly be. And when we got up there, each member had the name Mountain View in their head because every viewpoint that we looked at had amazing mountain views. So like Principal McKee spoke earlier of their library windows, our library windows as well have amazing views of mountains, as do each classroom that you experience. So I will put a little plug in for Mountain View Elementary as being the top among the parents and a top among the core team. Back to you, Principal McKee. Ah, Principal Key is muted and needs to be unmuted. So can somebody help her with that on the tech team? I spoke your facial expressions.
Yes, thank you.
They're too much.
Yes. Wonderful. Okay, thank you. The, let me, let me share with you our top five choices for our school name. We, we gave eight choices to parents and so we, 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 we got a whole sort of different outcome than the E16 and that's okay. But let me share with you what those names are, why we, why we liked them. These are the top five choices from the parent family survey. This is in alphabetical order. Alpine Middle School was a choice and the reason that this is on the list is mostly because we're situated among the mountains, but we're also situated among what is commonly referred to as the Isaguas Alps. The building is located on Cougar Mountain and the name Alpine acknowledges our connection to Cougar Mountain and the nearby foothills and mountains nearby. Another choice we have is Cougar Mountain Middle School. Middle School six is built on Cougar Mountain. Another choice is Forest View Middle School. Middle School six is fortunate to be located near beautiful forests, trails and natural beauty. Additionally, as a school with five floors, there are east looking views of Squawk and Tiger Mountains and the natural beauty of those locations. Another choice is Talis Middle School. Middle School six is located at the base of the Talis Residential Community. And our fifth choice, again, in alphabetical order is Valor Middle School. Valor or courage is a virtue that the middle school six core team and families support for their school and students. Courage comes in many forms, such as the courage to do the right thing and courage to try new things. And so like E16, it was important to us, you can see a theme here to really, really capture our natural beauty. We, I think we all just love living in the Pacific Northwest. I know I do. I'm not a native, but I choose to be here because it's such a beautiful place and you can see that many of the names do try to capture that. So these are our five choices for both E16 and middle school six. We asked that the board consider these and hopefully can make a determination by the March 25th board meeting. We are open to questions now, or we have, I think, two more slides to share with you our mascot and our school colors. So we're happy to, to proceed in those next two slides and then answer questions, whatever the board would like.
Erin, was there a particular fan favorite among your five choices?
I can tell you that the, the top three choices were Alpine Middle School, not, not in that order, but Alpine Middle School, Cougar Mountain Middle School and Talis Middle School. Forest View and Valor were, were towards the end of that five. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Okay, we'll keep going. We'll finish up our presentation then and we're happy to answer any questions. Oh, and Tara is muted. Can we get her unmuted? We're just taking turns here. I think she didn't want me to feel left out that it happened to me and not her.
I wanted to copy you.
Yeah. Okay, Tara, do you want to share more about the mascot for E16, potential mascot?
Um, sure. I have a Mr. Johnson entering the waiting room, so I'm going to admit Mr. Johnson.
Oh, wow.
Right.
Get a multitask.
So powerful. All right. So we just wanted to do a little disclaimer that these are sample logos. Principal McKee and myself went on our favorite Google and pulled something up that just was like a picture of our mascots that we're hoping that you approve. Elementary sixteen are the wolves. This intelligent animal is known for bravery, playfulness and its strong sense of community. This animal is a native Washington species. So like I said, the logo pictured here is just an example. Our other options were the fox and the whitetails. It was very important to the core team to pick an animal that we might see in the, in the school surrounding area. So very native to this area. So we were really excited with this option and look forward to your final decision.
Great. And then for middle school six, we also offered our, our future students three options. Those options were Falcon, Raven and Owls. Falcons was overwhelmingly the choice of our future student body. This animal is a smart, fast and agile bird of prey. While they live in many places, some species are indigenous to the Pacific Northwest. And fun fact, there is Falcon Way adjacent to our school building site, which is just so, so lovely and perfect, I think for us and kind of a tip of the hat to the Talis community. As a, I don't know, as a thank you for allowing us to be your neighbors. And again, this logo pictured here is just an example. We are working with graphic designers and the architecture firm to draft up some, some really great images that our students will be proud to display.
I too would like to add that our, our wolves was a definitive mascot winner among our student population with a 60% of the overall vote. So.
I think we got pretty close to that number as well. And we are asking for board action to approve these mascots. We do have one more slide. We want to share with you our school colors.
Again, I feel like a drum roll is needed because these are in colors. So elementary sixteen, we have moved on with the school colors of Navy and Sage. And the core team, like we've shared before, we looked at all the colors out there in our district and across all levels, elementary, middle school and high school. And then we really took that site visit to kind of pull what the fill was of the area. And so the Navy and Sage really came from being on the school campus and the site and just looking around at the surrounding area and these just hit home. So going back to our core team meeting, we looked at our long list of brainstorm colors and narrowed it down to a few options. And like we said, presented those to some cabinet members and here we have our Navy and Sage.
Great. And middle school six spent a lot of time, a lot of discussion on their school colors as well. We wanted to make sure we could identify our student athletes at track meets. And you know, be able to incorporate them into the, the planned, the, the plan for the, the inside, the interior of the school as well, without conflicting colors happening. When we were onsite as a core team back in January, we just saw a lot of sky. This is a five story building and we saw a lot of sky and we, we truly felt like we, we wanted to incorporate some blue. We do know that there's some blue and some other middle school colors. So we get that, not this blue though. PCMS is Carolina blue, Pine Lake and Beaver Lake have a navy blue and there's no gold. Maywood has gold, but they have gold, green and gold. So we feel really great about these colors and we're already beginning to incorporate them on the interior of the school building and in our acoustic paneling and we, in our stairwells. It's just really exciting. And so I wanted to, we, we wanted to share these school colors with you. There's no action requested on these, but it's exciting and it's, it's part of our, our school identity as, as we build our schools going forward. And this is our last slide. So we're happy to take questions. We're happy to go back to previous slides, whatever the board is curious or would like to know about.
Does, does the board have any questions? Nope, doesn't sound like it. Do, so the colors are a done deal. Did I understand that you need the decision on the mascots tonight?
We're requesting final approval tonight on our mascots.
That would be ideal so that we can move on with our capital project folks.
Okay, perfect. So we, we, I was gonna say, I thought their, their mascot ideas were great. The, the wolves and the falcon. I'm fine with them. I was actually fine with any of the six, but those are the two you like.
Me too.
They seem to be good. So.
I like those.
So do we need a, if you want, I'll throw out a motion.
Throw out a motion.
We can debate it. I move elementary sixteen use wolves as their mascot and middle school six use the falcon as their mascot.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, you have mascots.
Hooray.
I have goosebumps.
Thank you very much.
And I guess we will put the, unless anybody has any conversation around the potential school names, we can put that on the agenda for the next meeting or we can talk about it now. Your call.
And we're happy to answer any questions about the names at this point too.
I mean, we would be zaz to have names.
See? So it comes to that, really you'd like us to just do it now.
Yeah.
Is it, I, I, I think it's possible, but we according to the regulation and procedure, but I think when Tara and I spoke, that, that seemed to be a lot to ask, but
It's not a lot to ask of the board, but I think the reason that we do it this way is in case there is public input around. So we would have two weeks to, to receive any public input if people were just really felt strongly about one name or another. The, I've only been involved in naming two schools and the only time we didn't follow that rule was Gibson Eck because Brian just fell in love with Gibson Eck and called for the question.
But, right. And, and these, since you've done the survey, at least your school community has seen all of these names.
Right.
So clearly they, you haven't brought forward any names that your school community really hated because you've already narrowed this, right?
Well, yeah, fun fact, the one that I really loved came in dead last. So no, it is what it is. We wanted to honor the, the voice of the community.
We were really pleased. Elementary sixteen, the core team, like I said, wanted Mountain View and our parent community just agreed with us, which was very nice.
See, I'm, I'm personally kind of partial to Cedar Trail.
I know.
But given that you're telling me that the team want, you know, I'm willing to be rich.
I like Cedar Trails too.
I walk that trail up there all the time. You do have a trail.
We do.
Cedar, but.
Stopped you to talk to you on that.
Let's just call it Cedar Trail.
We're gonna just call it, how about the middle school? We call Cedar Trail Middle School. We'll just, no, just kidding.
Cougar Mountain Middle School because it's sitting on Cougar Mountain.
Oh, no. And then you've got Cougar Ridge and Cougar Mountain. Don't do that.
That was my take on it is.
Hence the two, hence the two weeks.
I remember when they named Pacific Cascade and they said, oh, nobody will get it confused with Cascade Ridge. Everybody, you got it.
Well, there you go.
So.
My preference for that one is Alpine.
Yeah, Alpine.
I particularly liked Alpine.
Yeah, I like it. That's fine.
I like Forest View, but I could be, I could be swayed. I don't, I don't have super strong feelings on any of these.
I, I do want to share that Forest View is a great name. There is a private school named Forest Ridge, I think, located in Lake Monterey, Bellevue nearby. I, I don't think that'll be a problem, but I did want to share that.
Yeah, well, there's Forest Ridge. Is there also a Forest View?
No, it's Forest Ridge.
Okay, I misunderstood her. Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm disinclined towards Talis because we don't normally name schools after their neighborhoods in case we re-boundary them and like not all their neighborhoods.
We're gonna be pulling a lot of kids from Newcastle and Bellevue.
I was gonna say Newcastle is the one that we, we did do that. We did break that rule. And I'm not sure it was, I don't know if it was our best plan.
Right. It's smack dab in the middle of Newcastle, so it's not.
Yeah. And middle school six is pulling kids from multiple areas, not just Talis.
Which is.
It makes us, it makes me less inclined to use Talis.
Yeah.
I think the question is, are we going to try to decide tonight or give it the two weeks for public?
Well, I would be inclined to wait the two weeks for public input unless, unless this is really urgent and you really want us to take action.
I want to know what Harlan thinks.
So I, I think for me Alpine, I think of being at the top of a mountain. I think of that is a type of terrain and nothing that the school is surrounded by is Alpine. I get where it's Isaguas Alps as a nickname. I, I, I have a hard time with Alpine just because that seems like a school you would name if you're in the middle of a ski town or up near Soqualmie. I, I just, I don't think it makes sense to me because we're down in the valley. That's just me. The others I could all live with. I think for the elementary school, we still don't have a Samamish elementary school anywhere on the Samamish Plateau. And I think at some point we should probably have a Samamish elementary school since there's going to be now 15 elementary schools in Samamish and still not one named Samamish Elementary School. But I could live with Mountain View Elementary School.
We could save Samamish Elementary for E17.
Which is technically going to be in Isaguas.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Good point, Director Morales.
And E16, does it just draw kids from Samamish or drawing kids from both Samamish and Isaguas?
Both.
Uh, both.
Yeah.
Yeah, both Isaguas and Samamish.
Yeah, because it's pretty close to the southern boundary of Samamish.
And Samamish High School is in Bellevue, just to be clear.
I know that one is just annoying, but that was named before the, I mean, the city of Samamish is only 20 years old.
Yeah, it didn't exist. I, I, just based on observing you, it sounds like a little time might not be a bad idea. I don't want to upset my principals because I know they're eager, but it's interesting to hear how much dialogue you have.
The mascots are great and I personally support the blue and gold, by the way, as my sorority pillar. So good choice there.
A couple of blue and gold schools, although I really like the Navy and Sage. That's pretty. So maybe they're not supposed to be pretty. I don't know, but I like it. The colors look good together.
Yeah, Principal Coyle and I are pro pretty and we're fine waiting two more weeks. We, we want to do it right and and do it well. And yeah, everything actually is urgent right now in our world as planning principals. There's nothing not urgent, but we, we plan to wait till the 25th. So we, we're happy to, to wait and do it right.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your presentation. I think actually these are all really good names.
I think Harlan may be stuck.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think my request is for the agenda for the next meeting. Can you just put the top three choices of each school on then this week and see it embedded? I think if we're going to ask for public input, having that would be helpful, or if you want to put five or whatever, but they, they need to be on our agenda somewhere.
Okay, that's fine. We can do that.
I prefer to put five.
Top three. I, I, I mean, I would, if you guys narrowed it down, then that would be fine too. At least that's what I heard from Principal Coyle was it was kind of like there was. Or I, I.
We had our top five.
I know I saw the list had top five, I guess, but I thought that there was only like a couple that you were really narrowed down to or same, same thing with middle school six, maybe.
We had eight names. We had eight choices and a write-in option for families and then we narrowed it down to five.
Okay, well, we'll get that on the agenda. That, that sounds good. And we will make a decision next week or next.
We'll, we'll be there. We'll, we'll be there.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Monitoring report EL fourteen on instruction, and I would entertain a motion.
Yeah. I move the board accept the monitoring report for EL fourteen instructional program as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, and Director Mellish?
I'll, I'll go ahead and kick us off, Rich, and again, thank you. I get to follow that, you naming of schools and mascots and all that fun and following student performances. But I, I just thank you for this opportunity to monitor EL fourteen instruction, instructional programs. This is, I believe, our longest, if not one of our longest and most comprehensive executive limitations. I'm gonna touch on just a few highlights and updates, and then I'll also ask Executive Director Mellish to share some thoughts, as most of this EL touches on the TLS world. In fact, Director Weaver, I believe you were part of the subcommittee that.
Marty and I were.
We create, yeah, and Marty, that Marty, and that's right, and our previous Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning as well. So there was a lot of work that went into this, and, and it's quite comprehensive, as I noted. So I'm not gonna spend too much time, because I want to let Director Mellish talk about some of the highlights, but one of the things I, I wanted to notice, and again, this is on instructional programs, and, you know, under item one, ensure that the instructional programs are based on a comprehensive and objective review of best instructional practices and research. And certainly, our TLS department does a tremendous amount of research into what our best practice is whenever we are moving forward on either a curriculum adoption or investigating an instructional practice. I did want to highlight, as you go into page two of the report, and I know the board has had the report for a while, I was impressed by the, the bottom half of page two and rolling most of the way through page three, kind of a summation of all the work that was done last spring and last summer as we made that transition. And I refer into remote learning. I referenced it earlier, but it, it's pretty amazing when you see all of the stuff that they did, from the development of the assessments to identify learning gaps, the Canvas learning management training that our teachers have embraced and are using, how, how to engage in developing a successful remote learning environment. There's just been all kinds of work that was done, and I think it went a long way. If you'll recall, there was a lot of well-deserved criticism of the emergency learning that we were forced into a year ago in March and April and May. And even as our teachers got better as the months went on last spring, it still was, it was not of the quality of anything that the Issaquah School District is used to putting out. So the team doubled down over the summer, and quite impressively, I think, our teachers have been able to deliver a much more robust remote learning program because of that. And to Dr. Gallager's earlier point, I think we provided a lot of good PD on the front end of that. So we've, we've got some work to do as we talk about hybrid and coming back in that regard for our professional development there. We, as we move through aligned curriculum and base instruction with academic standards that meet or exceed state standards, some new tools were brought into our system, such as we piloted the use of the iReady Math Program for the screening and diagnostic, diagnostic assessments in the fall to, again, identify learning gaps. As we, I'm still, I'm on page four now, and as we move down, I just wanted to highlight a couple of other points. Last year, we, a district committee was formed to address the new state standards in financial literacy and develop a new unit of instruction for our eighth grade students. That is something I was on the front end years ago of developing a, a financial literacy program for our students. We know that's something that is important, and we, we were using one system affiliated with the junior achievement for quite a while, but it, it was time for a refresh, and so came together and did that. And then also a note about the expanding CTE course offerings, and I'm, I just think that's something that we can be really proud of as a system. You'll recall when we got our early data back on what students were doing with the additional seven-period day, we saw a big bump up in CTE classes, and those just become, our CTE program has just gotten, it's become more and more sophisticated and just really impressive. I was, I'll share a little bit later tonight about Samanic Conversations, which is a CTE consortium that we belong to with neighboring districts as well. Again, a lot of assessment work has been done in TLS as well, those fall assessments directed at identifying learning gaps. One thing, you know, we forget, because we have been so focused on remote learning and all of that, we had a robust online learning program with opportunities prior to COVID. And our, we had many students in middle and high school who were accessing some additional classes through, through our online, working with our online coordinator and our, and our online program here in the school district. And that continues and will continue going forward. Also, the addition of co-curricular classes and activities such as robotics and sketch coding, all of these things continue to play an important role in our school system. We have adopted choice materials, because we know that choice is a motivator for students, and specifically, we have added some new high school novels with much more diversity of narratives and choice involved in that, more along with the book club approach, and I know the team really worked hard at finding novels that had that diversity of narrative. So in addressing student learning styles and needs and various backgrounds, we continue to use GLAD training as one of our instructional strategies. We provide lots of opportunities for differentiation through the Merlin Program and the Sage Program and our secondary highly capable supports. We brought in integrated Lexia reading interventions. We, we provide special education supports for our students as well. APIB, college in the classroom, running start, and honors classes for our students, the CTE program and expansion that I mentioned. All of these are things that have continued to grow and be developed in our system. You know, Executive Director Mellish, I don't want to steal all of your thunder here, because I know you had some highlights that you wanted to in some of the procedures and work your department has done as well. So I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to you at this time, and then we can ping pong it back and forth, too, if need to.
Yeah, well, thank you. And I, I feel like I missed, I went missing a little bit of the context, because a lot of what we, a lot of what we do in this district through TLS and with our staff is in various stages of the curriculum adoption process. It's actually a mini-year process, because we spend some time in discovery prior to initiating the adoption process and looking at new standards, going into depth of best instructional practices, and then selecting and pulling together an adoption team, once, once the leadership has a charter to do so. And the adoption team is, is mostly classroom teachers with some support from specialized staff from special education and ELL, and we always now make sure we have an equity rep in there as well, somebody who, who represents one of the many positions we have that touch on equity. That group then looks and looks at all the, all the curriculum available in that area that they can find that, that meets a quality set of criteria, and, and then screens it down, narrows it down, and then spends time selecting some finalists that they field test, and after field testing, make a final selection. And that process is, is quite rigorous. It's many, many hours, a lot of release time of staff spinning, doing deep dives into instructional practices and instructional materials. We really bring together a lot of quality staff from, with practical experience to do that process. And in the last school year, we have been in one stage or another with middle school health, middle school PE, reading foundational skills for the elementary, high school ELA, K eight social studies, world language, middle school science, high school science, high school math. We've been in some stage of selecting curriculum for all of those areas during the, the, I guess it would be the nineteen-twenty school year. Always got to keep track of which year we're talking about.
Year in the rear.
And so I just, I, I want to applaud the work of those teams, because it, when you add that up, that's well over a hundred staff members who have spent time trying to develop new resources and curriculum, and some of them were, ended up being very timely. I would say that getting the high school math done before remote learning ended up being quite helpful in terms of having a modern math program with digital resources. I also do want to highlight in the high school ELA, that it was driven by equity. It was driven by the idea of diversifying our narratives. I, I wish I could, I should have brought, I should have dug up the slides that we used to illustrate this, where if you showed the picture of the authors prior to the adoption that we had in our adopted materials, you would have seen a sea of white, mostly white men. And then when you looked at the authors after our adoption, you saw that it was a majority people of color, gender balanced. And we made sure that we got diversity and representation in all phases, so not only in our book clubs being highly diverse, but also in the whole class novels being highly diverse, so that we could expose students to a lot of diverse narratives. And so hopefully, all of our students at some point in their, their high school career will, will find themselves in their novels that they, they have. I will say that the implementation of that has been repeatedly interrupted. It was interrupted greatly by this, by this COVID, because we are, our teachers are creating the units. We are, we did not, we adopted novels, and then we, we work with teachers to help and support the creation of these units. So it's, it's been something that I, I don't think we'll be, see the full effect of that high school ELA adoption until fall, probably fall of 2022, but I'm super excited about the incremental growth of that over the last couple of years, and really just impressed with our high school ELA teachers and their commitment to getting diverse narratives in front of our students, and narratives that really engage them in issues that matter to them, the real, they, they're not into sugarcoating that, and I think that's really a highlight for, for something about our high school curriculum, is that they want to have curriculum that engages them where they're at, what the world that they know they're going to be facing, and to ask the tough questions and engage in those tough conversations. So I just wanted to highlight that one. There was one other one here I wanted to highlight as well. And then I, I guess the other context I wanted to throw out there, because I'm forgetting what the other one, what I wanted to highlight was, is three themes that seem to be coming up in best instructional practices through multiple departments. And, and so here, I'm gonna step a little bit outside of, of TLS as well. Inclusive practices has been something that has been a growing theme in our district. So I think when you see this report next year, you're gonna continue to see inclusive practices flooding the, the best practices in the work that we're doing. For us, inclusive practices, yes, it's about making sure we're inclusive of students with disabilities, but it's also about inclusive practices for students who are English language learners or multilingual. It's about inclusive practices for some of our folks that feel underrepresented in the curriculum in our district. How do we, how do we build practices that draw them and are more inclusive of, of who they are as learners? Culturally responsive practices is the second area that's, that's a major influencer on future decisions we're making around instruction and materials. How do we make sure that we not only have culturally responsive, but really culturally sustaining practices? Things where students get a chance to find themselves and develop their personal identity, even as they learn that they live in a very, a, a, a community and a world and a state where we have a lot of diversity, and, and it's important to be able to be culturally responsive to others and culturally sustaining of your own culture and background. And then the final one that I, I give kudos to our, our Special Services Department and our Student Intervention Team is trauma-informed practices. As we, as we go forward and looking at best instructional practices, is looking at, at, at how, how we adjust when we run into students who are facing trauma. Obviously, that's been a huge one this year, as, as we've had conversations, but even last year, we started introducing trauma-informed practices throughout our district. So inclusionary practices, culturally responsive, and trauma-informed practices are some of the key themes that are rising and started rising in, in very tangible ways through last year. So you've, you've read all of this, so I'm not gonna go and highlight a lot more of it, but I am available for questions.
Great, thank you, Rich. Questions, comments, Sidney?
Thank you. That was a, a great overview, though. A couple of items caught my attention that I just love to learn a little bit more about. And the first one, I don't know what page I'm on, but it is ten, and it's a, the, the comment that I see is foster a relationship with the Snoke, Snoke Wammy Tribe to collaborate on development of future social studies curriculum. One, I think that's amazing, but where, I, I guess, can I understand more about what we think that becomes and where we are in that process? Yes, so. So the Snoke Wammy Tribe has, has kind of an education liaison that they, that we can work with, and we meet with them, or we were meeting with them regularly, and part of it was to look at how our native populations, our First Peoples are represented in our curriculum, so looking at that, and then how do we, how do we make sure that we're referring, making sure the references are culturally responsive and respectful. One example that was very tangible is in working with them, and we brought, when we were doing the elementary adoption, we brought atlases to them, because we needed an atlas, and we, we had them look at atlases with us, and they, they didn't like them. They didn't like how they represented First Peoples. And so we brought our feedback with their help to the publisher, and they created a new atlas for us. And now they're publishing, and then they published it for other districts. So they created a new atlas with language referring to First Peoples that were respectful to the First Peoples accord, and, and us not deciding what that respectful language is, allowing our, our partners to help us decide what that language should be. That's just one example. We are developing, I'm sorry, one more example, as we are, it's not last year, so I have to be careful. But we, you know, in the social studies work, we're developing Washington State. We started the review of our Washington State history, and we are partnering with five other districts now, and we're, to make sure that our Washington State history is much more diverse and that it also represents our First Peoples in a much more respectful and inclusive manner. And they are partners in us looking at, at reviewing curriculum or helping us to create curriculum. That's, that's great. I guess maybe my other question, and it's not just about this particular bullet, but do we look at maps and how we represent maps in our curriculum? It's similar to the Atlas, I would say, but often we have a very interesting perspective on maps and the representation of space and geography that can be very much based on an Anglo-Saxon perspective. And so that's another area. I would love to know how we, we look at that, that review as well in here. Yes, we, we did in the elementary adoption, as I said, in looking at atlases and trying to look at that, but we've paused our social studies adoption at the middle school right now. But it is the looking at, looking at social studies curriculum that allows, that doesn't allow, that, that is presented from multiple perspectives is, is one of, one of the key drivers. There's really two key drivers. Are we providing a true look at our society from multiple lenses? And the second driver is about inquiry. Are we doing more inquiry-based, so students are exploring rather than just being told what the history is? And those two drivers, so I think the question about maps, we haven't really peeled that one back at the secondary yet, but we're heading into that work. Yeah, that would be great. Thank you. And by the way, the thing I was forgetting to highlight was the, was exactly the Snoke Wammy Tribe's relationship. I think that is fabulous.
I didn't mention it either, Rich.
Yeah.
I had it highlighted in my notes.
So thank you for highlighting it. It jumped out at me. Thank you.
The, I'm glad you asked about the Snoke Wammy Tribe, because I had that highlighted. And then right below it is the section on this MTSS framework. So help me understand, because I know we've talked a lot about MTSS, and how is, how is this different? What is this compared to the other MTSSs we've talked about?
Yeah, so we, we began our journey as a district in MTSS by looking at behavior. So we were looking at the PBIS, PBSES work, and, but MTSS actually is, when it's, when we get to what we call integrated MTSS, it's when you combine behavior and academics together, and really. behavior and academics together. And really, I, I could go on for a very long time on this, so I have to be careful because it, it's been my life this year and the last year so much. And I'm very excited about the work that we're, we're doing because it's interdepartmental. It's interweaving these things. But in, in part, it's about making sure that just as we have tiers of support for behavior, that we're getting tiers of support for academics that are integrated, inclusive. And, and one of the things that I really like about it is when you get into the problem solving process, when a student is having a problem and you're trying to problem solve that. When you integrate those two, you start looking at root cause. Oftentimes, the, the behavior and the academic challenges that students have are, are interlinked to a root cause. So the goal is to figure out what that root cause is and hope that it supports, that addressing that root cause can support them to be more successful social emotionally as well as academically.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Morning.
I think mine's going to be relatively quick. I just was noticing, I was trying to look at either number nine or number twelve. Talking about technology or talking about supplying basically distribution of, of curriculum. So for me, part, I think you listed off much of what was supplied for staff in those areas, but what I was interested in was what was supplied for students. And I was actually pretty surprised that there wasn't a discussion in here that part of your technology for students was the quick turnaround time to get them technology in their hands, whether it be the computers, the laptops and the hotspots. So I thought perfect opportunity for us to talk about what that, that was a huge thing to overcome. A lot of districts were not able to overcome that, that piece. And I think it's why North Shore for so long didn't supply any learning to their students because they couldn't do it equitably.
There's another EL where we talk about students to computer ratio and distribution. And so I'm wondering if it would be, we could definitely include that in that distribution or in that EL. We did, I mean, we, we turned around, we thought we were going to be handing out a couple hundred devices and it well, well over four thousand. And I think this year we're up over eight thousand.
Yeah. And I, I guess some of it is just my thought that it's now becoming core to instructional programs. So I know we have another area where we talked about that technology. But for some type of highlighting that students that, especially as we move forward, digital equity is going to be a huge, huge piece to be able to say, that's going to be part of implementing instructional programs. And so
Yeah. And I'd love to draw your attention on page eight. And I just, I, I tried not to repeat things in multiple sections.
I wondered if you put it somewhere.
Yeah. So on page eight, I did want, I did want to hi, I did highlight, or we, we did highlight the allocation of laptops for remote learning and that partnership between our ed techs and our IT department. And, and then also some of the tools that we added. And we do have a, one of the things that I, I want to give two shout outs on this particular area. One is that the ed, ed tech department led by Director Eggers has come up with core tools to create more consistency around. And those core tools are, are really the tools we use with students. So yes, the teachers become familiar with them and the teachers use them, but they are, they are an interactive tool with students. So whether that be actively learn, seesaw, those sort of things became core tools even before COVID, we were, we were creating that. I also want to give a shout out because I, I mentioned, I mentioned earlier in here in the report, the the move to learning management systems. We were really well positioned because of the foresight of our ed tech department. They already had a committee that was reviewing ostensibly to look at, at replacing our, what we call our web presence for teachers with a more common format so they'd be easy to navigate. But they were looking very forward thinking of tools that could enhance instruction. And so many of them were learning management systems. So when COVID hit, we, we, we were already one meeting away from selection of a learning management system. We had already done playground reviews of learning management systems. So selecting Canvas was a, was a relatively easy thing for us to do only because the work was almost all done prior to, to COVID hitting. So I do want to give a shout out to the ed tech team and the teachers on that, on that selection committee. They are actually now meeting again to say what's next for learning management. Looking forward and what we've learned from this year. So we often do that with adoption groups and this year it seemed very important to learn from what we got out of Canvas because I think that has been one of the positive takeaways of this year has been the integration of Canvas.
Well, and I think, so I do see it. And now I get why I missed it because it was like a little bullet point.
Yes.
Yeah. Allocation of, because it was much bigger than a bullet point. And so I want to say thank you so much to your staff and for the technology staff and all those that made that happen. And I think it's something for us to consider ongoing that as you develop this curriculum, how much more important is going to be ensuring that technology is in every, each and every student's hands. Because that was our biggest learning was that we have what the outside world considers a pretty wealthy, generally wealthy district. And yet how many of our kids needed technology? It was twenty-five percent of them didn't have a laptop to use. And so a lot of our families still only have one or two computers and with everyone trying to be honest. So I think that's going to be important for us in our future discussions about what does it really mean to have an instructional program and what's required? It's no longer making sure they have a book and a textbook in their backpack.
And I will say increasingly the curriculum we're looking at have technology as an essential component of their curriculum. So if we can't accommodate that, that limits the curricula that we can look at and review. So I agree that that's an issue we're going to have to peel back at some point, but.
Well, and certainly things have changed this year because we used to say, well, does a student have access to a computer or to the internet? People would say, well, yes, of course, because we have this computer and any of my kids can use it. When you're suddenly talking about, well, you've got three kids, each of whom is zooming their classes and mom and dad are working from home. Now that one computer in your family room is not going to cut it. You actually need five separate devices. And most, many families were not prepared for that. Any other questions or comments? Carlin?
I have lots.
Okay.
So, you know, as an executive limitation, it's for better or worse, the language of the superintendent may not fail to. And I think for me, the challenges or concerns I have with this report is I think it would be totally appropriate of called out that Governor Inslee closed the schools on March seventeenth or whatever day it was until June eighteenth as an overriding reason for a lot of things. But I think a lot of things in here aren't called out that I think should be. And so our students went with what, six weeks without really any learning before the central learning was actually started. It was a long duration. I don't know the exact time. So, but I think that needs to be honestly called out. And I think that this sugarcoats what, what was a really bad spring for our students and families. And I think it needs to be an accurate reflection of what actually was accomplished last year. That's a standard that we hold the district to in any report. So when I look at number six and it says, ensure that the instructional programs, including both content and practice, are uniformly implemented, regularly monitored and modified as necessary to assure the continuing effectiveness. I know along with every other parent in this district that what we were getting was absolutely not uniform or consistent or monitored last spring. And so do I expect us to have done it better or more perfectly? No, it's easy to look with in arrears and say, well, it should have been different. And so I'm not asking or criticizing what was happened. But I do think that this should be an accurate reflection of what we delivered or didn't deliver last year. So I'm not looking back and judging and saying, well, we should have done XYZ. So don't misunderstand me, but I do believe that this should be an accurate reflection of the education that was delivered last year. And when I look at this, I can't in good faith support this report as written because it says without exceptions. And so without us having important language in there to accurately reflect what this last year was, I cannot accept this report. And so when I look at number ten, at the top of page ten, where it talks about the district continues to offer pre-K summer school to support kindergarten readiness. Due to COVID nineteen, we were unable to offer this program in the summer of twenty twenty. So schools weren't closed in the summer of twenty twenty. They were open by the governor or they were not closed by the governor. So it could say we chose not to offer the program in twenty twenty, or we did not offer the program in twenty twenty. But say we were unable to offer, that was a district choice. But that one there looks like it was a legal thing that, that say, said that. So I, I, I just want this to reflect what, what happened, what we did. And certainly I see a long list of the mitigation things that we did to address it. However imperfectly, I just wanted this because we are so much about looking in arrears about this report is a reflection of what happened last year. I just don't believe that this is a reflection of it.
I, I think that is an interesting perspective. If we consider this a historical document of how things were, I don't know if I would have a reflection of this past year. Especially I think that you have sold me on the idea that without exception. I do agree that I don't, I, I agree with you. I don't want it to be a blame game. I just want to be it to be a realistic assessment. And so is this a realistic assessment that without exception, we met EL fourteen last spring, last school year, including the spring. And I think your spring is a huge exception. And it's not any, the fault of anyone in this room.
Absolutely not. It's not a finger pointer at all. I don't take it that way at all. It's just that if we're going to hold ourselves to this standard of as written in bold of superintendent certifies that the district is in compliance with EL fourteen with no exceptions. I, I just don't believe that's true. And again, it's, it's not a reflection of the work that was done. But I do think we need to acknowledge the work that wasn't done, not of anyone's fault, to your point.
So we have a couple of options. We can go ahead and take a vote and see where it falls. We could throw it back to the administration asking for some kind of an update acknowledging the things that changed in the spring. What's the pleasure of the board?
I think to, to do that, we either would take a vote to table it, or I would say take action one way or the other to make it clear. So that it's a vote of the, a vote of the board. Because I don't know if I want to do it on consensus, if not all the board thinks that way.
Well, no, and I agree with you on that.
Could you take a vote with, with exception? Is that, is that allowed? I don't even
That is, but then that goes into the whole superintendent evaluation because now you've got an EL with exception.
But I think that's for us to decide at the evaluation time. If we, we're really blamed for that.
Okay.
Because that's a different, that just, it doesn't mean that we're going to dock him on his evaluation for, for only the areas that say with, without exception, right? So we have a full discussion when his review comes.
But then that's still a change to the EL because the superintendent currently, the document in front of us says the superintendent certifies that the district is in compliance with no exceptions.
And, and I think for me, I'd like to see if the superintendent and staff could go through and say with realistic eyes, where, were there exceptions to this portion? Were there exceptions on number nine? Were there exceptions on number ten? And then what were they? Because I think it's really, again, a, a kind of a historical document. We don't know that we're not going to run into a strain of this virus that has us closed all over again. God forbid. But if something like that were to happen or something else happens where we have to shut down for any period of time, it would be good to have a document. And let's say that none of the people, oops, sorry, none of the people in this room are here. This is a historical document. Wow. What did they do back in twenty twenty?
So what, I, I guess I'm struggling between we get all the way to evaluation and maybe skip past what is the actual request for this evening? Is it to push this back for rework? Which is, I guess, where my brain was going, but it sounds like we just talked about just saying it has exceptions. Or is rework not an option?
But you'd have to list what the exceptions are.
Yeah.
And be more specific.
Well, I, I guess I assumed that was a request.
I, I think at the point that you say there are exceptions, then I would think the administration would want to delineate what those are.
And then re-review?
Or, I mean, and, and this is, this is us talking. The superintendent can say, no, I think it's good with no exceptions and we can vote or he can choose to go back and, and rework it.
I guess before we go further, I would like to hear probably a, from our administrative team on that. Because Sidney, I think we could just say, hey, maybe we, we've done that with ends and heels before to say, hey, we would like to see this in it. So we don't feel it's ready to be voted on. We've done that before.
Yeah, we have.
I don't think that's an unreasonable approach. I, I'm, I'm not trying to convince anyone. I'm just, I'm telling you my personal opinion.
We, we have actually had ELs with exception before. I'm trying to recall. I, I know I was involved in that once before.
One was a data issue.
I was just going to say.
Treading of documents.
A box was
There you go. Yes, that's right. That's right. And so it, there is, uh, this wouldn't be the first time that something like that has happened. I mean, it's really whatever the board determines. I mean, we can go back and do more work on this and bring it for another monitor and you could table it. Whatever direction that you want to provide, we'll certainly go back and try to scratch that itch better. I think partly as I was listening to Dr. Gallagher, I think we took it from the approach of, you know, highlighting, here's all the things we did when we were forced to the close down without actually acknowledging the close down necessarily that was forced upon us. And, and as I read through the document and we went through the document, it was kind of trying to highlight, well, here's what we did. And here's, here's how we got computers out to people and things like that. But there isn't, as Dr. Gallagher said, a flat out acknowledgement of the deficit that was created as a result of that last spring. So it's, I understand the conversation and just know I don't ever take any of these things personal. This is a lot of work in here and the, the, you know, I know what the team did last year. And, and I would also keep in mind that two thirds of the year last year, we weren't closed down. We weren't in the pandemic. That was just the, the final twelve weeks of the school year. So really, truly, however the board wants to, you know, proceed, we can, we can always go back and do more work. We can work in agenda planning when would be an appropriate time to bring it forward.
I don't want to create a lot more work for staff because goodness knows you guys have enough on your plate already. I think maybe just making, making the deficits a little bit more explicit might scratch the itch. I mean, depending on how we do this, we could even bring it back on the consent agenda for approval.
Whatever.
No, Harlan, no.
Yeah.
Well, no, I mean, if you're shaking your head, no.
It can be pulled off the consent agenda by any board member at any time. So, yeah.
I know the rules. I'm not going to do that.
So I think it's a, interesting question, right? I think it's a little more than just documenting the interruption. Right? It's, it's about, I guess, clarity in the impact. So I think it is one thing to say, okay, COVID happened and this is what happened. We had a forced closure and we weren't prepared because we hadn't for that circumstance. But I think maybe if we're going to do the rework, which would be my preference, just to acknowledge that these things were done in reaction to something. just to acknowledge that these things were done in reaction to something, I think it would be not just a statement of what happened, but a statement of the impact of that on the results of the year. So, these are the things we believe we lost. These are the things we believed didn't happen. And then, yes, I think the recovery is well-covered. The new learning management system, the release of laptops. But I think, for me, it would have to be both. Like, what is the acknowledged impact to the year? Similar to what we'd have to do when we monitor this year, next year, right? That there's some known impact of that, of the change in how we're delivering school.
Well, I mean, we certainly talk about the learning loss. So, we know at the end of last year, there was learning loss, and certainly at the end of this year, there is as well. And so, really, that's the outcome of the issues that we've had with COVID that put us into this place, even though none of us wanted to be here.
Yeah.
And I think an acknowledgement of that could be added to this.
So, it sounds like the will of the board is to table it for tonight and throw it back. Marnie, I'm looking at you. Do we actually need to make a motion to table it?
I could withdraw my motion.
And I'd withdraw the second.
Okay, that works. So, can we, and this is in no way, at least from my perspective, in no way meant to negate the fact that you guys did a tremendous amount of great work last year. But there was that three-month thing that happened. So, can we throw it back to you?
You absolutely can throw it back to me, and we'll take another look at it. Maybe there's some work that can be done on some of the interpretation as well. And looking at it from that different perspective of not just showing, here's what we did to address it, but kind of acknowledging the impact of it. And I'll go back, and I'll listen to the comments of the board as well, and the notes, and we'll try to get a better sense of what the board is looking for here.
Okay. Are we good with that, board? Okay.
Well, and I just want to say thank you to my board members. I have learned recently that I do my best processing by talking through things. I'm not somebody that can read through something and just process it fully. And so, thank you, Harlan, because I was starting, I think I was kind of, there was a hint of, hey, we did some things to support kids with the technology, and I didn't feel that was addressed enough. But I think it was feeling like I read through this and didn't quite feel the impact of COVID on our system. So, thank you.
Okay, and that brings us to board policy. And I know that when we left this last Tuesday, week ago Tuesday, we said that we only wanted to do EL 12. But as I thought about it, I realized we couldn't only do EL 12, because the language that we proposed for EL 12 was replacing other language that needed to go somewhere. And so, the whole EL 12 was, I think, originally, learning environment and treatment of students. And our thought was to take the portion that was treatment of students, lump it into EL 2, which is treatment of people, because students are, in fact, people, and blend those two together, and then completely revamp EL 12 to learning environment. So, let's talk about EL 2 first, because I think it's pretty straightforward in that. I believe the value statement that I took is just a blend of the two existing value statements from before. This is more or less a list of all the bullet points that were included in EL 2 and EL 12. I believe some of them have been reordered. I don't remember doing that. I think Harlan and I did it jointly many, many moons ago. And the only thing is, oh, shoot, where is it? Number seven. No, number eight was. I'm sorry, it's number eight. Use methods of managing information, including student information, that fail to protect confidentiality or protect against improper access. Am I looking at the wrong one? Hang on. Is that the one I merged? Okay. Somehow, it just didn't seem right. Anyway, there were two that were very, very close, talking about protecting information and the way we managed information. So, I blended those two together to come up with number eight. Everything else is the same wording that existed in the previous two policies. I did have Director Moore kind of sanity-check me on both of these, and there was an error in EL 12, which I'll get to in a minute. I can read this out loud into the record if you want to. I didn't think so. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns? This is a first read, by the way, so this is not, we're not taking action. We will look at this tonight, wait two weeks in case there is any public input that comes to us via email, and then take a vote at our next meeting. So, do I have any comments, questions, concerns on EL 2, Sydney?
When I read through this one, the only thing that came up for me, and it may be represented in a different, in a different policy. But what came to mind was, we had previously had conversations about like the welcoming nature of our buildings, and is that part of what happens in this learning, safe and respectful, learning environment? We talked about like a year ago, when we were doing some of the listening sessions with parents. And so, that one, if that is something we would address here.
I think that would fit in 12 more than in 2.
In 12? That's what I'm saying. That was one that I felt like I didn't see in either of them. So, I didn't know if I was just in the wrong ELs.
No, and I was thinking that same thing, of all the things that's missing. I felt like there was that piece of, you know, and I think maybe because I was perusing this, failure to assure a climate that characterized support and encouragement, and I kind of didn't read the, you know, of high student achievement. And I'm like, well, wait, you could actually just truncate that, characterized by support and encouragement for students. And yes, I want them to believe that, like we do, that they can be high achievers, that they can be good citizens, that they can be, or good community members. All those things that are welcoming, right? That we respect their culture, their family makeup.
Okay, I'm hearing kind of two different things, because I'm hearing Marnie talk about students, and when Sydney said it, and maybe I just, maybe it's how I processed it. I was thinking in terms of, like, families coming to the office in the school building, in which case, I would put it in treatment of people. Although, part of that is probably in our equity policy, too. So.
Yeah, I mean, it's an interesting point. I think I was thinking.
Go look that one up.
Was I thinking about like families, or was I thinking about students? I guess I was thinking about both. Like, as students and community are interacting within our buildings, is it a receptive, is it a welcoming environment that they're entering? And so, maybe, because this says student, maybe I really was triggered more by the commute. So, we do have students and community in the open, but really, then we go into students.
And I'll say that that comes from the statement coming directly out of the prior EL 12, which was about a learning environment. Which is why I think it had, you know, the superintendent may not fail to assure a climate that is characterized by support and encouragement for high student achievement, because it was about students where it was before. But now, it's in a section that we're trying to label for people, which includes students. But I see the point of, you know, in general, it's, it just, in general, should be a climate of support and encouragement, which includes being welcoming, right? I mean, and, you know, we do get kind of pushed off on this high student achievement, because then it always goes back to the pressure on academics. But it's more than, and the problem too, and I was pointing this out to Suzanne, when we use the word academic, too many people think of it as just core, the core subjects, as being academic. But yet, academics are way beyond just the core subjects of academics, to CTE, and our arts, and our music, and, you know, the other, those things count. But I'll just say that a lot of times, when it's referenced, they get left out of it.
I think the key thing, and one of the things that I always felt like was missing from the learning environment, is because it's not just around equity. It is literally the treatment of every student. And that, when we're talking with students, when we're working with students, we come from our positive behavior norms, right? So, we're, because if you read through a lot of this, especially towards the bottom, it's about the, what to do when they're complaining, what to do when they want to appeal, what to do when there's grievances, what to do when there's discipline problems. I'd like to start this out with saying that we want to make sure that the superintendent may not fail to assure a climate that's characterized by supporting encouragement.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, by supporting?
Support and encouragement. So, just truncating the rest of that sentence. So that we're, our perspective is that the treatment of people will come from a positive place.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that works for where I'm going.
Right, because that's the classroom climate. That's the school building climate. That's just the school community climate.
You know, it's even the teachers versus teachers. We have had those conversations with our teachers of color that are not feeling encouraged and supported in their buildings. So, I think it's really about, and that's kind of what we wanted with this treatment of people, is that it's all of those relationships.
Okay, I like that. So, basically, just removing the four high student achievements from number one. Yeah, I like that a lot, because we talk about student achievement all over the ELs. So, yeah, and that does change a bit what we're saying. Taking notes, so I don't forget.
I'm just saying, I could go either way. I totally get where we're going. When I start to think about it too much, then I go, the blog's everywhere.
Okay, well, I like that change.
And then it also does have the part, you know, that would tie into that works, is fail to, shall not fail to provide an open and responsive environment that encourages parent involvement, trying to welcome, in the terms of welcoming the community in, or welcoming the parent community in. And that's in there as well.
Yeah, and then we do have, in the equity policy, an environment and culture that supports and encourages effective engagement of all families. So, that, I mean, it's okay to be redundant.
Yeah.
I think.
And to make something clear with less words is a good, a good thing.
Yes.
And then, so, just because I'm looking at how it's structured, would it be possible to move number four to the number two slot? To have it higher up, and again, to start with the positives?
Yeah. So, move number four up to after number one?
Yeah.
Okay. Consider it done. Any other comments or suggestions? And if something comes to you in the wee hours, feel free not to call, but drop me an email. Be happy to incorporate it before we do the final read. Okay, so we're ready to move on to EL 12?
Yes.
Okay, the first thing on EL 12 is, I realized when we presented it at the last meeting, that it didn't have a value statement. I gave it one that I'm not necessarily in love with, but I didn't want it to be the only one that didn't have one. So, I said, "The board believes that every student should have access to all academic and social emotional learning supports that are necessary for them to achieve their full potential," and high student achievement. And I'm almost tempted to leave that out of that one now, too.
Yeah.
And just say, "Full potential." Less is more. And this is the same language that we looked at at the last meeting, except at the last minute, I realized that, I think it was, I don't remember who it was, but someone suggested that on two, we add a second bullet that says, "Regular feedback from stakeholders on homework practices should be solicited." Regular feedback on homework practices from stakeholders. It's, the grammar is clunky because of the "may not fail to" language, and it ended up being in the passive voice. If somebody wants to rewrite that, or if it's not scratching the itch.
Can you just align the words "should be solicited"?
Regular feedback. Well, if I eliminate that, it's not a sentence.
Solicit, regular feedback from stakeholders on homework practices?
Well, since that bullet, number two, is about homework practices, you could probably just say, solicit regular feedback from stakeholders.
Okay. I think I did it the other way to make it similar to A, but it's clunky, so. Okay.
I don't know if I would actually add it here, but I think the thing for me that is important, whether it goes here or not, is, and maybe it's in the regular feedback, sort of. But in the last conversation we had about homework as an example, what we talked about was how we tend to look at it today as individual instructor, and what they're requesting versus the cumulative impact or cumulative perspective to the student of what it is they're receiving. And I do think there is a, I don't know, some sort of student-level impact assessment, or student-level cumulative understanding that's required. Otherwise, I don't know that getting regular feedback on how my individual assignments I'm giving really moves the needle on how the student ends up experiencing their entire workload. So, for me, there's something in there, at least of being cognizant of the, of the total, the total impact or the total workload on the student in addition to the individual course by course.
Okay, so the problem with B, as it's written right now, is it's not clear who is soliciting the feedback. Is it the teacher? Is it the principal? Is it the department head? Is it the superintendent? Because we don't actually, we don't specify that. And I don't want to get too prescriptive on this either, but at the same time, we're being vague. Because I take your point, having a teacher solicit feedback on homework would be very different from having, say, a principal do it, because then you're talking about, well, these are my six classes, and. Okay, so the superintendent may not fail to ensure that homework practices are, homework practice should be consistent.
It's actually a really interesting point, which is who does do that, and who? And who? Is that the, I don't know, who, who does do that? Like, the cumulative experience, is that the grading coach or in teaching and learning? But where does that happen to kind of add up the cumulative impact? I don't know.
We'd have to figure something out, you know, in terms of would, you know, would it be a survey that comes out from Teaching and Learning Services? Because you're right, you're going to get different, if, you know, I, I will assume that there are teachers out there soliciting feedback from their students on all kinds of things, including homework. But that is a different way to approach the question. If it was left just the way it is, I'd have to interpret it somehow and figure out how we would do it. We would likely try to bring, it would likely lead to some kind of a survey. I don't know if, or a question, you know, we already do a number of surveys, a question, or questions related to this. But, you know, conversations with teachers and stuff, we may determine that actually there's, you know, a better way, and maybe it should be feedback from the individual teacher, so. But it'd be our task to figure that out, I understand that.
Yeah, it's a little bit of a slippery slope, too, in that, you know, I could, my student could be taking seven IB classes, and you ask and solicit me for feedback on my homework, and it's like, oh my God, I'm buried. Well, is that, is that the fault of the system, or is that the fault of my decision to take seven IB classes? So you get, you get in a strange place.
And, oh, go ahead.
Well, I was thinking, I almost like it being more broad, the way it's written, so that we're not as prescriptive, we're not saying, you should be doing this. Because I want them, I want the system to be able to say, how can we talk about this as a system? And it might be that annually, Teaching and Learning does some type of survey out to students or families. I would say, you know, similar to what we did about the engagement. You know? But I wouldn't want that to be the only thing, because then the district can just say, well, we did a survey, and this is what our results were.
But that, but that it could be.
Well, you're gonna,
Like, I don't want it to be only that one thing.
What's equitable is not going to all be universal either.
Right. So I think, I don't want to, I don't think I prescribe it, because I still think I would love it if teachers had something that when you turn in an assignment, there's a small little thing that says, answers like two or three questions about, was this homework meaningful? Did you feel you learned something from completing this homework?
Is, is there something in the teacher evaluation process? Right, in the rubrics that involves like homework? And as an element of that, really, that engagement of feedback from students regarding their homework?
There's, you know, I don't, I'd have to, it is, I don't know the tool well enough off the top of my head, because I don't work with it as much, I'd have to refer to the staff. I know there are absolutely things in there related to how you communicate and, you know, but that specific, I'd have to go back and look at the tool, I don't want to misspeak.
And I, I would be happy with something that in here is, regular feedback from stakeholders on homework practices should be solicited, you know, with consideration for cumulative student impact, or cumulative student workload. Because I, I get your point, Suzanne, that different, different categories of students are going to carry different workload. Just based on their selections, but I do think there, what I, what I would hate to have is to walk away and come back, and what this says is, you know, we, we asked and we got an answer, when really what I'm hoping to get to is a student-centered answer. Do we know what, do we, do we actually know? Or, or are we planful about what this actually feels like when it all adds up for the, for the student?
Well, and then, too, when you look at homework, I mean, part of the challenge of looking at the impact, I mean, Suzanne talked about the schedule you take for, for any kids. For one kid, what can be done in five minutes takes another so much longer. It's really, it's so student-dependent. But I think what's more important about homework is the value of the homework. Did it actually help the student learn something more deeply? Did it help them actually retain the information, make the information meaningful to them? And I think that's where we get the complaints about homework is just so much busy work that, that doesn't, that in the, too often in the students' cases, doesn't add value to what they're learning.
Or that's their perception.
That's true.
Right, I want to be really clear about that. We get a lot of feedback from students. I could, I could envision a world when we say, oh no, we've researched this. This is the comprehensive and objective best practices, but the end user may still not feel that it's equitable.
Right, and that's what I was going to bring up, is like, my concern about that is, you know, I think what's really valid data is when we ask our students who've graduated, hey, when you reflect back on this, how valuable was your social studies class, or your whatever? That is really important to me, I think snapshot in time could be in the context of what was going on for their week. So if you're going to have anything like this, I certainly would want it not to be based on assignment, but like at the end of their class, or at the end of their, like, so, I just think we have to be very careful, because certainly my interpretation wouldn't be something as discreet or minute as that, because I think that that didn't, I just don't think it's valid data necessarily.
Yeah.
I think having end-of-course data for our junior and senior students is probably as valid data as it is for our college-level students, because they're essentially doing college-level work. But to ask a sixth grader, was, hey, was your assignment in health valuable to your learning? I don't think that's developmentally appropriate.
And, so you actually bring up a great point, but I guess my, serving the student isn't maybe what's in my mind. What I would like to know is that the educator, maybe it's based on department head or grade level congregation, actually has a conversation on what is an appropriate level we expect of, of homework? What's our approach, what's an appropriate level? And are we there plus or minus in what we're delivering to our students? It's not the reaction, like, if you ask my kids, you would, you know, you would certainly get the, of course, it's not appropriate. I'm, I want to know that as a system, we actually have a way to evaluate, what do we expect the cumulative experience to be? And that there's a way to do a check and balance at a, at a, whatever the rolled-up level is, not of the opinion of it. But right now, I guess I question, who, who does that? Who says, okay, across all, you know, sixth grade math, we expect it to be a certain amount of work that happens? And teachers, are you plus or minus of where that, that estimate is? Not necessarily, what is my opinion of the work that I get done?
I agree, that's, that's ultimately what I care about.
Yeah.
Is how is the system addressing the equities?
Yes.
I have teacher A, and I get an hour of homework a day, and I have teacher B, and I get 10 minutes of homework a day. And, and if you have the misfortune of having six teacher As.
Yes, that's what I'm like.
Your experience as a freshman at Skyline is going to be very different if you have six teacher Bs.
That's right.
And, and I think that's what I just want to make sure that there's some sort of look at, what is the uniformity, consistency, equity by which we expect students to learn in our system?
But unless you get feedback from your students, how do you know that? Because the teachers, that, like, all the social studies teachers may easily get together and talk about how they do homework, but I can't imagine the one teacher that's going to say, well, I give so much homework, it takes my students over an hour every night to do it, compared to the teacher, other teachers. I don't see how you're going to get that out of that conversation.
Maybe through listening sessions, like, we don't, like, all the students know which teachers give lots of homework, which students don't. I mean, and that doesn't, that, that information doesn't change year over year.
Yes, but how does that, that information get to that teaching staff?
And that's where I guess,
That's not for us to do.
I guess that's where I'm at with it, which is, is there at least a statement of the general range that someone could know whether they're on the right side or the wrong side of? Like, what, what is gen, what is genuinely expected or acceptable in a certain aggregation of coursework? Because it, it is true, like, I do worry about, I get six of, I get six of the two hours a night, teachers, and I get, or I get six of the 15, 15 minutes a night. But in each case, I don't know what was the established good pay in this grade level, in this coursework. And so I guess that's where I'm at, which is, it's not, it's not really about the feedwork, it's about what's the guidelines we set out, and how do we set them? And how does someone know, I don't want to set the guidelines, I just want to know if someone does. Because at some point, it all rolls to the student.
Well, without monitor.
Yeah.
I would point out that teachers have very differing views. So you can put a group of 12 high school language arts teachers in a room together, and they, they will articulate their positions very well, and they, they may have very differing views. So somebody may say, I absolutely think it's appropriate to give X amount of homework, and look at how well my students perform, and blah, blah, blah. So I just, that is one of the challenges you'll face, they're not a monolith. They don't, they're not all going to, they're not going to agree amongst themselves, just as we've experienced. Parents and students won't agree either on the, that's one of the challenges of things like homework. So it's just one more variable that has to be considered as we try to, I mean, I, I, I understand what you're trying to attain at a very high level, that level. It used to drive me crazy as a building principal when I had to have these meetings with parents about, why is this teacher who teaches algebra doing it so much differently than this? And we would have department meetings, and we would try to get to continuity, and you would have very strong-willed teachers saying, well, I think you're wrong, and you're not doing it enough. And, yes, you do get into some of those kinds of debates as well. But, you know, I, I understand what you're, I mean, I think any principal will tell you they've lived in that, that world.
And, and I agree with you, what you're saying, but I, I would say, sitting here in my sixth year, I feel like that is used as the barrier to make any progress towards change. And I think that's the part that, why this is brought forward, is because we're not seeing any meaningful, reasonable progress towards change. And so I think that fear of perfection is holding us back from having a conversation. To your point of earlier things, like, it's not going to be perfect. And that's okay. But I think if we don't even, I think I'm wanting to craft policy that the district will then have a conversation about it, is, is, is what it is. And I don't, I don't know the answers, I'm not the educational expert, but I do know that we've heard enough consistently over time that this isn't just an isolated, one-off thing in one building. And that's why we're here talking about it.
Yeah.
So on number one, we do say grading practices should be consistent across departments. On number two, we say homework practices should be consistent across schools. Maybe we need another bullet point to say that homework practices need to be consistent across departments.
Maybe I'm not looking at the right one.
So number one C is about grading.
Says grading practices should be consistent across departments. But we don't have a comparable statement in two, and I'm thinking, maybe we want one.
Yes.
And so maybe that.
That's a policy direction, in my mind.
Yeah, so maybe that would be better than the, the soliciting feedback.
I, I still think that the soliciting feedback needs to be a part of it, and I, again, I don't want to be prescriptive of who that is. But I think at some point, being able to sit back and say, do, because if we're going to say it's going to be consistent across a department, the department really has to know, and they're going to have to at some point solicit that. It might be teaching and learning that says, we need to have a conversation about that holistic across all your department. And it might be an individual teacher to go to what Anne was saying earlier. What I experienced is, the teacher thinks this should only take 20 minutes, and it takes your child three hours. How does the teacher ever know that? They never bother asking, guaranteed, they never bother asking. So how do you know, as an educator, how do you know if a particular student is outside? And it's that each and every ideal of, I can set up what I think is a good homework assignment, but am I considering the students that are doing that? How many students learn better by, you know, I process better, listening and talking with people? So I might need a different type of assignment for these group of kids, because that's what they're going to want to do, so that there's not so much definition around, this is exactly how your homework needs to be done.
Sydney?
So I like a lot, was it C? C, and including that in two. And the other question I would have, that maybe combined gets me where I want to go, is B of one. The students should have multiple opportunities to demonstrate mastery. Is there a corollary statement around homework? Homework as a vehicle to build toward mastery, or something similar?
I like where that can potentially go, I don't know the words.
I don't think that's the right words, but I think there's something in that B as well. If we can get there on homework as well, I think that, that gets to, that gets far enough for me.
I think you're bringing up a point, though, and maybe I'm combining it with my own thoughts around, does consistent mean the same as? Or does consistent mean equal? Because if you're looking to achieve mastery, and you have a student that learns something the first time around, do you need to give them a math assignment that has 50 questions on it? It's like, well, I figured out how to divide after the first three, do I actually have to do the next 47?
Well, that goes back to the value of the homework, you know, of the assignment, is it? That's a difficult one, though, in that, who makes the call? In that, I'm sure if you asked my kids if they needed to do the homework, they would tell you no. And then they would flunk the test. So, and, you know, for the teacher to say, well, Anne, I want you to do 20 problems, but Sydney, I want you to do 35, that, you can just see that's a problem waiting to happen. Well, and, and some of this is really difficult across the whole K-12 span. I mean, the best situation for my daughter, probably in their 11th, 12th grade years, the teacher made the homework optional. And the kids found when they didn't do the homework, they didn't do well on the exam. And that consequence taught the kids to do the homework. But it takes older kids to do that. I would argue it probably takes older, high-achieving kids to do that, because I think my kids still would have failed, but. I'm sorry, and they're very successful adults. I shouldn't continue to pick on them, but it's just too easy. Well, maybe we just have to write some new words and keep going tonight. Yeah, I mean, if somebody, yeah, I agree, if somebody comes up with words for that thought, I am certainly willing to entertain them. I am, though, going to switch back to that clunky syntax, because if I say solicit feedback, that sort of implies that the superintendent needs to do it, and if I say it should be solicited, that leaves it open-ended as to who does the soliciting. So I don't like the syntax, but I'm going with it anyway. Any other comments on any of the other?
You could do, the superintendent will ensure solicitation of the feedback.
Yeah, well, he already may not fail to, so that's,
Yeah.
That's there.
I think that works.
It just seems like a lot of our conversation is on the, our philosophical belief about what homework should be. So does that belong up somewhere in our value statement, rather than in the policy part? Like, I mean, just saying, like, we believe grading practices should be equitable, we believe homework should be given in order for students to be able to demonstrate mastery, or, you know, work towards the ability to demonstrate mastery. I don't know, it just seems to be more like, this is the board value, rather than, so I think that's why we're struggling with, well, how would you implement something?
Yeah, I like that, I think that.
Especially in an EL where he has, can't fail.
Maybe that should just go up in the board value statement.
I think you just hit, I think you just hit it.
He did.
He did.
Good job, Harlan.
Let me, I will try to, I don't want to try to. I will try to, I don't want to try to draft it now because we're too tired and my brain doesn't work, but let me try to draft something. If my trusty editor in chief would let me bounce it off of her, or I could bounce it off of all of you. Um, I can send it out. Before the meeting and you can give me feedback if it's not scratching the itch, but I think, I think you've hit. On what our problem is. So, thank you.
And more importantly, I think our staff want to go home, so.
Yeah, I think we all do. Um, okay, so anything else or we're, we're good on that. I will incorporate those changes and get that sent out to you guys. ASAP. Okay. Oh, my gosh, um, capital, is that where we are? Yeah, capital projects. Wake up, Tom.
Before you, before we go to that one, just can the word same and number seven, can that be changed to equitable?
Yes.
Because we don't, it isn't really the same. We don't want them to have the same.
No, that's good. Thank you, Harlan. If, if anybody finds anything else like that. Later, let me know. Tom, I walked by that school on Tuesday. It looks gorgeous.
Yes, it's coming along.
It really looks like a school.
Absolutely.
Or I should say, it looks like a really nice school.
It's going to be, good evening. We'll get to the.
And we apologize for keeping you so late.
No, that's all right. Elementary 16 coming along the exterior, the. The yellow is insulation. The orange is a skin called frog skin that goes on, which is a vapor barrier. And then, believe it or not, on top of that is another board of, another piece of insulation and then furring strips and then the siding goes on that. So it's quite an elaborate exterior of the building. Lot of site work done. All the utilities are to the building. We have a, I can't quite see the. The writing, so um. All the utilities are there, rough and plumbing, electricals going in. We've got sheet rock. We've actually got some finishes going in. In some selected areas, perfect.
Thank you, Vanna.
Going in, it, it's, it's going great. And we're, we've got one more permit to work with city of Sammish. We're on with the right of way work down in front. And we hope to have that within the next couple of weeks. So we get that work started. And it'll be perfect timing. We couldn't really do it much before this time of the year anyway, because the. The wetness and we're dealing with a small roadside wetland down there. Change the side. There's some finishes going in on the left, sheet rock, windows are in. Coming along nicely. This is the, the cap sheet of the roofing is going on here. And following that on the parapets will have sheet metal. This is the insulation board and furring that you can see, and then the siding goes on to that. Middle School six coming along, quite a project. I talked with the superintendent. He said they're about 98% on structural steel. There's some minor steel that. Still is not there. It's not the kind you necessarily erect, you put it in place. You don't need a large crane, so for all intents and purposes, the steel erection is complete. The. Metal you see on top is the, is the metal decking that creates the roof, the, the structure for the roof to go on to. The large cages on top are all HVAC screens. For the HVAC units. And again, same type of system, the orange. And you put on insulation, more insulation and furring on top of that, and then the siding. Goes on top of that. This area down here that you see is the covered play. And this building also has some sheet rock and finishes going on the inside. And we're still, believe it or not, working on a permit with the city of Isiqua, a site work permit. And. How many, I think there is probably 15 different permits. And the last one's a fairly significant landscape permit that deals with that and some other site amenities. That we're trying to wrestle out of them. You can. Switch side. This is the, the sports plaza or the plaza off the balcony in between the sports field. Then you can see the shape of the. Football field at the end there. They're up to rough grade as they call it. And then from there, they'll build up with. And put the turf on top of that. This is the gymnasium and Ox Gym on the lower level. Pretty incredible structure when you go in there and you see the height that these walls are 30 and 40 feet high concrete walls. And they'll be pouring concrete in there shortly. Again, this is a, a small, very select areas of the building. They're doing everything they can to keep the project moving or is, is got some finishes in it. Here's just a corridor with sheet rock and framing going in. High school number four. We moved off of, we got the city, we drug them. Along kicking and screaming. And they bought into our site plan. We did some minor revisions to the site plan and. They backed off of their. The FAR requirements and the. Build two line. So we're back on track. We've got a schedule with them that shows a. Early August 21 construction start if we. They maintain it, we're pushing them to. Review the schedule monthly to make sure we're still on track with them, trying to keep them aware of. Where they're at. Maple Hills project went out to bid. We've collected bids, signed the contract. Construction will start hopefully. Probably mobilization next week and you'll see some good construction going in. Starting probably the first of April. Still working on a few finishes with the principal. And again, HVAC. Sprinkler system and then some other areas. It's going to be a nice little project. Beaver Lake, we're in for building permit to the city of Sammish. We've got our first round of comments. We're responding. Oh, we have. We have not. Yes. We have got the first round of comments and responding to them right now. And things moving along, again, working with the principal and the staff on some, some finishes and some minor items. Liberty High Stadium. Finally got some momentum behind the contractor. So you can see the two little buildings have got the block finishes on and the, the exterior metal siding. They're looking at a April 1 completion date. Liberty or Isiqua High Stadium. Is into the city and we're. Looking at comments probably within a month from them. And that project will hopefully begin this summer. It's going to be broken up into phases, a couple of different phases, the press box. And the state, the stands, and then we'll have the visitor stands. And um. Potentially new field lights to get rid of the old field lights and get a newer LED style. Fixtures in there. And the schedule. Holly Street, the early learning center? The spring of 20. Water took out a good portion of the creek bank over at Holly Street by our parking lot. Was it 20?
February of.
February of 20, yes.
Yes.
Spring of 20, yes.
I've got pictures on my phone.
It's done it over the years a little bit, but this time it finally took it out completely to the parking lot. So we're in the process of working through. Permitting and anytime you work in a creek and especially a half a mile from a, from a fish hatchery. You would not believe the amount of. Permits and permitting agencies FEMA, Department of Ecology, Department of Fish and Wildlife. The city, Army Corps of Engineers, it's. It's quite a process. We, we're starting our temporary. Bank protection started this week, which is just some piles and, and. Metal sheets driven down to protect, so we don't lose any more of the bank. And. The length of the permitting process will probably put us in, we only have six weeks in which to do the work mid-July through August because of the fish window. And that'll probably not be this July, it'll probably be the next. That's how long the permitting process takes with these agencies. The Holly Street Campus Early Learning Center is into the city for permit. That is a remodel of the interior of the. Holly Street Campus, the old admin building, which will add four classrooms. It'll house ECE, Ecap, pre-K. Nathan's group. Yep, child find, it'll have its own little health room. It'll be kind of a. Miniature. School. It's, it's going to be a good project. And we're, we're keeping our fingers crossed. It's going to all deal with permitting to be able to get that open this fall for, for starter school. You want to talk about? Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Sorry, Harlan.
Where is the funding coming for the Holly Street improvements? Is that, because that wasn't part of the bond, was it?
No.
Okay. So, and then while you get up, it's going to be the next question is the HVAC. So for Maple Hills and Beaver Lake. I don't know how construction processes go when you're rebuilding models. Is that on a front end, back end? Because it'd be really great if we had the most updated HVAC possible before we return to school in August.
So you're, you're asking if the HVAC systems. Will be.
For Maple Hills and Beaver Lake.
Beaver Lake will be completed for start of school this next year. Yes, that is the intent for both schools. It's all. Maple Hills has a much better chance because we're started. Although we found out that HVAC equipment lead times are. Incredible now, as you can imagine, and Beaver Lake will all depend on, on the. Permitting and being able to get started and get those. Units ordered. Some of them are 16 and 20 weeks out.
And so. I just think that as the permit process goes, if we have to probably pressure Sammish to say, hey, you know, we really need to update the HVAC system for your kids in Sammish. To pressure the city, I will happily carry that forward and go to as many city council meetings as I need to because.
Absolutely.
I think that's going to be critical for, again, building confidence in our system for August 31st.
Absolutely.
Um, Jacob Cooper, Chief Financial Officer on Holly Street. Bank erosion projects coming out of basically interest earnings from the bond proceeds itself. And then the Holly Street project, which is about a million two. Is coming out of the interest earnings, but also we had $150,000 from the Department of Commerce. Thanks Senator Moll and Representative Callen. So we had a, we had some ignition funding for that. And it's also freed up space. Which we were in dire need of pre pandemic. But it's also freed up space to allow us to kind of consolidate services as well. And I'll have to hand it to Assistant Superintendent Jody Bungard. She's the only, she continues to. Move forward with the early learning plan regardless of pandemic or not. So if we take a look at her three year, four year plan, most of those items are checked off.
Three year plan is, three year plan is done, been fully implemented, and now they're developing the next phase of their plan.
I just, I, I just think for that, we should be applying for pasta dollars. And so maybe we need to schedule a linkage with. Reagan Dunn and Kathy Lambert and have them come down and maybe we should meet. And then we get to meeting at the Holly Street and say, hey, this is. We need those dollars for. Because. We live in King County and should have every right to apply for those dollars.
And I, I believe Assistant Superintendent Bungard talked Kathy Lambert's off. Yeah, you did.
I did. I applied for funding through Best Starts and I'm sent in a proposal. About a year and a half ago and then had a follow up conversation with Councilmember Lambert as well.
This is different than Best Starts money because that is operational money. This is really capital money for early learning facilities out of the pasta dollars.
Chief Director Gallagher, we should approach Kathy Lambert's office directly or. Councilmember Dunn, both?
Yeah, I would do both. And I think we should just have a board linkage about it.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Anything else, Superintendent?
If the board has questions.
Any questions? Thank you so much.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Legislation, Director Gallagher.
So first of all, thank you, Director Roldo, for attending, covering for me around those day on the hill preparation meetings. So I'm going to hand off to you because I wasn't there and I can talk about the large caucus.
And I wrote it all down on that notepad that I don't have with me. But no, I did want to highlight. Because I discussed it when I talked about legislative conference. Specifically, there is House Bill 1476. Which is really the one that supports. They kind of are calling it the whole harmless within WASDA. So that's the one that would. Hold us harmless to the. To the enrollment reductions that we've seen. So one of the changes from conference was that. The legislators kind of looked at. How they do their business and their like student allocation is completely within the jurisdiction of when they write the budget proviso. So that they wouldn't need a bill. In order to. Allocate more to districts to keep us whole. To do their allocation based on. Our number, our enrollment from October 19 rather than October 20. So they have removed that portion out, would be promised that it will be in the budget proviso. However, so SB, excuse me, HB 1476 now, one of the things are, why the bill still exists is because it doesn't do, this bill would help us. Hold us harmless when it came to local levy dollars. Because if you don't have that protection, there would still be a reduction in. Allocation that we receive from our levies. Because that's still based on our formula that's per student. Um, so when we do our day on the hill, which there is. A place for us to sign up and signups are by tomorrow, and I haven't signed up because I figured we'd talk about it at this meeting. You cannot have more than two people. Because. I don't.
Because they don't want it to be an open.
They don't want it to be a public meeting and recorded. Yeah, so no more than two of us.
Okay, so they're virtual meetings, but still only two people. Okay.
So the other, other bill that I thought was interesting. Because it's kind of around graduation requirements. One of them that they were talking about was SB 5249. Which is about mastery based learning. So I thought we have a distinct interest. That's passed the Senate. It's now in the House. The House is hearing it tomorrow and on the 18th, which is Monday. I think it's Monday. The 18th, whatever day that is. So that. That's going to be the next work of the work group. And, and then what? The State Board of Education will be taking a look and really building rules around mastery based learning. So I'm hoping that we still have. Somebody on that work group that understands. Mastery based learning and has a nice, beautiful graduation transcript that can be working with. The State Board and the work group. Because I think that's going to be important. I'd hate for us to be doing five years worth of work and then being told by the State Board, yeah, you can't do it that way anymore. So I think that we actually need to take a look and have our discussions around that bill. And that's really other than. Signing up for the meetings and let me see, it's on the WASDA website, but I did not take a look. I got an email today. Let me see if I can find it. And I'll send it to everybody. So you should have gotten it. It's from WASDA on the hill. At WASDA.org. Is who it's from. So I'll forward that to you. So I believe there is a link. For you to be able to click on. And we have. Several legislative districts. One thing that I didn't know, so WASDA, so this is actually for meetings that WASDA has already set up. And we have several legislative districts. So one thing that I didn't know, so was to act, so this is actually for meetings that WADA has already set up. Now, we could decide, we don't want to be in there with Bellevue or Riverview or whoever. And we could decide to set up our own. And that I didn't, I didn't know. Or if, do we feel we have too much on our plate? We'll just go when they tell us.
I, I think we're gonna plan to have our own separate spring meetings anyway, but this will be something separate. So I think if there's interest in them, I think you just sent out the dates, but they're all over the week as far as dates and tags. So.
Yeah. And it's interesting, when you sign up, it didn't look like they gave me the times. It just said on or around.
The spreadsheet, they're all listed. So I can just read them out in case you're interested. So Connaughton is March eighteenth at one forty-five. Milantai is March fifteenth at three thirty. Lisa Wellman is March sixteenth at two thirty. Lisa Callen is blank. Mark Mullet. And Bill Remo, Mark Mullet is at March fifteenth at eight thirty. Bill Remo is March fifteenth at eleven fifteen.
And then if we wanted to do the eleventh district, Steve Berquist is at ten thirty-five. David Hackney, who we have not met yet, is at one PM. And then Bob Hasagawa, who will tell us that we should have our own bank, is at two PM.
And is this what you're saying? You only wanted two, two per board?
Yeah.
And no more than two.
But there'll be people from multiple school districts
Right.
that are in that legislative district.
And then we can determine if we wanted to take time for the forty-eighth. We also have on March eighteenth, Fundana Slatter at nine fifteen and Amy Wallen at four o'clock.
Yeah, the scattered format just doesn't work for my, for my calendar at all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not sure there's gonna be many that I attend either. And when we schedule our own in the spring, I'll let you guys know about those. I did want to say that we are meeting with Congress staffers tomorrow and next Friday. Our focus, we were, we were challenged by Superintendent Reichdahl for those upcoming S R three dollars to say, hey, you guys need to go and advocate for this. So like, okay. So over the next two weeks, we're meeting with staff from Senator Cantwell and Murray's office, as well as from Schreier, Smith and Del Benny's office. So, and we're, our focus is talking on the federal funding for school recovery. So, and then, do I have the ability to screenshot?
I do not know.
No.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna share this. So I hosted the Large Schools Caucus on Tuesday morning. And part of that was, I, I wanted to show the one that you see in this fade-out blue slide, which people see in this. Okay, so you'll see, this was asked in the middle of November of twenty twenty. And these are all large school districts. Because like, one thing we realized is that the larger your school district, the harder it is to, to return the system. And so you see in November, there were zero large school districts in our state doing middle school and zero doing high school. At least some who attended this week. And this is something like the top twenties large school districts in the state. So then I asked the question, because knowing that we have a lot of schools back in, so here was the middle schools. So what are you doing for middle schools for in-person learning if you're a large school district? There was one district in the state that was doing all day, four or five days a week. There was some doing all day, less than four days a week. And why I say some is because if you're a school director, if there, there was a couple of districts that had two school directors in the state. So I, I'm not confident to say it's three school districts doing that. But then I'm gonna go to a high school. So you can see, there was zero, again, large school district. And we had thirteen of the twenty large school districts represented here at this. And two that were doing part of the week, all day. But then zero, again, doing part day. So the point for me was this is not just a challenge, it's unique to Isiqua. Sometimes I think we got caught up in all the community feedback we get on, you guys are the only ones that aren't open. What are you doing wrong? And I just wanted to provide this, bring to the board on, hey, well, here's thirteen large school districts in the state, and this is the, this is what they've been provided. So I just thought that was important and helpful. Otherwise, we talked about two topics. I led it off with, it was really great that the WASA executive director sent out a letter about the six-foot physical distancing rule. And I think that was a really important thing to really push that conversation forward. And so we talked about sort of what are the updates that you need, and that was certainly at the top of the list. And then I provided this, which is a, to launch the conversation on sort of funding and recovery funding. And you can see, so here are the large school districts. And Isiqua has similar amount of students as a lot of these. And you see, we got two-point-five million dollars of S R funding so far.
Wow.
Bellevue is the same size as us. They got seven-point-nine. Highline is smaller than us, and they got thirty-point-four. So this is why we're having the federal conversation, because when all of the S R funding is tied towards Title I dollars, but COVID actually impacts every student. There needs to be some sort of FTE component to that S R two funding. So I think part of when you meet with your local legislators, the, the elevator conversation is so we need legislative action to give Inslee the authority, or the, or OSPI, either one, the authority to modify how S R dollars are spent and allocated in Washington State. And if there's one single most important thing that we can communicate over the course of this spring legislative session, it's that. Because the S R three that just got, that just got signed, I mean, which will become S R three, is going to be larger than these combined. So the potential gap that Isiqua will experience compared to the rest of South King County is going to be significant. So I just wanted to throw that out there. No, so I'm sure.
Yeah, that's good. Well, it's not good, but it's good information. So.
And that's, that.
Thank you, Harlan. Okay, Superintendent Thieley works in progress.
I will be quick tonight. I did want to just share that we have continued collaboration with our Center for Collaborative Study Partners, offering professional development. I know we talked about professional development earlier tonight, too. We still are providing opportunities like our spring book studies, which have always been online and remote, so have continued in that same manner during the pandemic. Just a couple of examples of titles that are available right now for our book studies are Blind Spot, Hidden Bias of Good People, Making Connections with STEM. There were some earlier books on distance learning playbook, and some of those are being retired. And, you know, we're constantly kind of, usually they last a few cycles and then you move one out and you move a new one in. But I always, I like to share those because I do think that they are a reflection of kind of what the trends are and what people are, are interested in out there. Obviously, equity issues are important. STEM may, continues to be important as well. I, I did want to, oh, I, we, it was fun tonight to hear from Principal McKee and Principal Coyle. But I wanted to just acknowledge the announcements that were made this week for two new principals. A new principal for Maywood Middle School, Crystal White, who has, I did share when I introduced her to the staff. I believe Crystal is the only principal that I've ever had that actually attended the school that she's now the principal of. That's pretty rare that that ever happens. They were, they were thrilled. So a real driver in that community was, you know, they, they are feeling a lot of change coming their way. They're gonna lose three hundred students. They've lost their principal. They know that they're gonna be losing staff, because of course, when you lose students, you lose staff. And we were very fortunate to have a very, an outstanding assistant principal there, had a desire to lead the building. And we're excited to see where she'll take that building next. So Crystal White is the new, starting July one, Maywood Middle School Principal. And then for Creekside Elementary, Ms. Amy Allison, who is the assistant principal at IVE. And Amy has been in our system for a long time, actually taught a number of subjects, taught at the middle level, was a TOSA. And then was a dean and then moved into a dean at Cougar Ridge and then moved into the Isiqua Valley position. And that was a fun announcement to, to be able to make this morning, too. They're excited for new leadership. It was, there was good candidates in both of these pools. So it was, you know, it's the kind of problem that you like to have. One of the candidates was, would have been another boomerang for us, too. But in this particular instance, we went with, with Amy. And so they're both excited and a lot of fun there to, to be able to have those conversations and announce those individuals. And then I, I referenced a little bit earlier today, the Wannick CTE program. And we had our meeting again, that's another consortium we belong to, different groups of, some of the same, but of several different districts, eight, eight districts in our, our Wannick CTE consortium. But today, I, I really enjoyed our conversation today because we talked a lot about trying to find in-person opportunities. There were some examples shared. We believe we can move our fire and rescue program to an in-person opportunity because we use a contract employee for that. Our teachers who work at the Wannick campus are part of the Lake Washington Association, Teachers Association there. But we also moved forward on the idea of having increased special education services there. Almost a third of our Wannick students have an IEP. It's, you know, it's very hands-on and, and we realize, though, that a lot of times it's challenging. So it's typical Wannick student will have a partial schedule in their high school, whether it be Bellevue High School or Isiqua High School or, you know, any of them that are in the consortium, Mercer Island High School. And if they have an IEP or a five oh four, you know, there's an obligation to make sure that the instructors know what's in those accommodation plans and are implementing them. But when you're dealing with somebody who's back in Isiqua or somewhere, it's just challenging. So we have a new principal this year at that facility, and she brought forth a proposal to bring special education support. It prorated, the cost of it is prorated by district, what percentage of your students with an IEP are there. So it's a quite minimal amount of money, but I think will provide a much better support for our students who receive special services in that, in that program. And there are some great Wannick programs as well. We still have the biggest challenge that we've always had with Wannick, and that's transportation. Just getting kids to the campuses at Digipin or the campuses at the institute. We do house a very popular Wannick program here in Isiqua, our sports medicine program. That historically, it's made up primarily of our students, but on a typical year, somewhere between six and ten students from the consortium will come to Isiqua for that program. So, you know, just, I, I thought tonight I would focus on a few things that had nothing to do with reopening, but then I slid in that we're trying to get some more in-person learning at Wannick happening. But I think that's what I'll share tonight, President Weaver, as I noticed that it's getting a little late.
Okay, thank you for that. Announcements and correspondence, I think we've had lots. Can everybody share with Diane anything they have? Calendar and future agenda topics. I have a number of things. One is, what do we call it? A gentle reminder that your PDC F one filing is due on the fifteenth of April. I talked with Director Moore about the Board Candidate Information Night, and she and I were thinking of April twenty-sixth or April twenty-eighth. I don't know if there's any particular district reason that one of those dates would be better than the other. We were, one's a Tuesday, one's a Thursday. I'm sorry, one's a Monday, one's a Wednesday. Thank you. We have no personal preference. There's no big district-wide something that's gonna impact anything.
Not on my calendar, certainly not. What time is that? Do you typically do that?
What were we thinking? Were we, did we say six, six, seven? Yeah.
Not, not.
And we'll do it via Zoom, I think. So we'll, yeah. So I assume somebody can set us up a Zoom link and publicize it. Do you want to just go with the Wednesday?
Sure.
Okay, so let's, we don't need a motion for that, right? Because it's not a board meeting. So we will do that on Wednesday, the twenty-eighth, via Zoom at six PM.
Just, just for clarification, when is the filing?
It's May seventeenth to the twenty-first.
So it's a little later than I used, I, I
Yeah, and we, we checked that out. We didn't want to do it too early, but we didn't want to bump right up against
That was my only thought was, because I, I seem to recall in some years, it's been as early as like May fifth or something like
Right, it definitely moves. But I did look it up and it was. Yeah, and we are, Anne and I were just reviewing the handbook, the board handbook. We'll want to be sure that that's somewhere, we can put that somewhere on the website so we can give them a link to the handbook and to the WADA. So you want to be a school director, you know, there's a couple of other things. And of course, a link to the director area maps, which is very important. We had talked at Agenda Planning about the fact that April is a five-week month and we only, or a five-Thursday month, excuse me. And we only have one board meeting in it. And we had, and that board meeting is on the twenty-second. So we have a board meeting on March twenty-fifth. We don't meet again until April twenty-second. At the meeting of Agenda Planning, we were all clever thinking, oh, well, we could just change it and have a meeting on the fifteenth and a meeting on the twenty-ninth. Director Moore pointed out to me that the twenty-ninth is the ISF fundraising night. So that's probably a bad idea. So, I'm sorry?
I would classically didn't have meetings right after the week of a break.
Well, we generally don't. And I think the only reason that we, excuse me, that we would do it would be if we wanted to do something like last Tuesday where we did a special meeting where we didn't do all the board meeting things, but just key pieces. And I don't know, maybe, maybe we think we're gonna be so far along by April that it doesn't matter. And we can go a month without a meeting, but generally, people have been pretty hostile about that.
Well, I mean, so were you gonna do a proposal?
No. Well, I was until I figured out that we can't do the twenty-ninth.
If it's gonna be a focus meeting that doesn't require staff preparation, then that gives us flexibility for the date if you're gonna add a meeting. So I would say if the meeting is scheduled for the twenty-second, then I would look at something like the thirteenth to host a special meeting that would be just a focus topic.
Okay.
So I'm just sort of, something like that. Just sort of, that's what we did for essentially this last cycle, we just did.
Yeah, and we don't actually have to decide tonight. We can wait and decide at the next meeting. We'll be two weeks further into bargaining and maybe we'll know more about whether we think it's important to have a meeting then. However, since you bring up the thirteenth, is there board availability on the thirteenth if we chose to do that?
I don't particularly like the thirteenth. Is the fourteenth any better?
I think Cindy and I, Cindy and I need to decide because our calendars fill up pretty quickly, so.
Right, I throw out the fourteenth.
It's just, Charlene, I don't know what your work schedule is on us.
The fourteenth could work. And the fourteenth work for you, Harlan?
Wednesdays are
Not Wednesdays.
How about the, well, the fifteenth?
Is the thirteenth, you're not available? And is that what I'm getting?
Yeah, see, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna be
I just say that.
Be here. Be here. 12th or 13th.
Oh.
Yeah. 14th works. I can, I have conflict on the 15th, but I can make it move.
So I could do the 14th, but I won't be able to do it at 5 or 6. It's going to be later. So maybe a 7:00 PM start, I could pull up.
Or do you want to zoom in on the 13th, and that's the other way we could do it? I'm not sure I could even do that.
Oh, okay.
Harlan was suggesting the 14th at 7:00.
If it's, if it's a short agenda meeting, of course, the last short agenda meeting we did was four hours, but.
Well, we just wouldn't have it.
We can try to make it shorter.
I, I'm actually pretty flexible those evenings, so that's not it. When, when would we decide? The 25th?
Probably.
20, yes, 25th is our next meeting?
Yes.
Let's, let's see where we're at on the 25th. We should, we should have lots of good information.
Well, no, that, that's my hope. I think Harlan was just saying that his calendar was going to fill up if we didn't reserve a day.
So we should just pencil it in and then decide later.
Pencil it in for what, the 14th or the 15th?
I definitely can't do the 15th.
Oh, you can't? Okay, so 14th at 7?
Yeah.
I will just put potential board meeting.
Okay. April 14.
And 7:00. It's on there, it's an hour, that's funny. Okay. Board retreat. We had talked about scheduling a board retreat in April. Where are we on that? Or what do we feel about that, I should say? That's an overwhelming response.
Yeah.
I guess.
Are we looking for?
And, and we can do this offline, but if we want to do, I mean, we can do it offline from the standpoint of Harlan and Sydney could come up with potential dates, and Diane could send out a doodle.
Right, and then we also need our superintendent of evaluation.
I was getting to that. It's on my list.
I was just looking, if it can't be in April, it could be in May for the retreat, but then the May.
Well, May, we should have a couple of superintendent evaluations. And, you know, maybe we just talk about that now. How would people feel about the non-board meeting Thursdays?
The board meetings are on which ones in May?
I'm sorry, the board meetings are on the 13th and the 27th, so we would be talking about the 6th and the 20th. We could even be talking about the 6th and June 3rd. I wouldn't want to go any later than that.
Yeah, I like that idea.
The June 3rd sounded better to me.
I'm sorry, Harlan, what'd you say?
I like the 6th and 3rd better.
So May 6th and June 3rd?
No, I, I have the 20th available, too, but it's more, I just think we need more time.
That, that gives you more time to write up everything and.
Yeah, that seems better, May 6th, June 3rd.
I can do May 6th, June 3rd.
Okay, that sounds like a plan. Anne, because you've always done it for forever, can I ask you to send out the survey ahead of that?
Yeah.
That would be awesome.
What was the time? I didn't hear the time.
Oh, did we set a time? We didn't. What time, do we normally do, don't we normally do 6 to 9?
Yeah.
Does that work?
Yeah, that's usually what we do.
Okay. Right, do we want to do that now? Or do we want to do that at the next?
Let's just do it at the next meeting.
Okay. I'm easy. Okay, so I did that. We kind of glossed over the retreat. I didn't sense a lot of enthusiasm.
No, I would rather set dates.
I think the unenthusiasm is trying to bind the date.
I think even, yeah, even considering my mind. I, I love you all, but I think I've met with you so much, I'm not sure I can handle a retreat, within my honest, my honest perspective.
It does seem like a lot in April.
It does seem like a lot. Well, we don't have to do it in April. But on the other hand, you're going to see a lot of us in May, too, so.
Because I think at this point, it would be, what would be the topics we're discussing at our board retreat?
Well, I have a couple that are niggling at me, and they are totally unrelated to remote learning or in-person learning. One of them is, I'm still not very happy with the way we do student reps. And after that class that I saw at WASA, I would like to revisit that issue. I would also like to start the conversation around our board mission statement. And because the one we have is incredibly generic, and I think it would be really nice to have one that was Isiqua-specific. And that, that's not something we would decide at a retreat. What we talk about at the retreat is how we would go about it, and how we would engage the public and get it up. But I think, I think we could do a lot better. That's not, there's no urgency to that, but it's sort of part of getting back to normal. Those were two that were on my list. We've sort of, normally, we would do that policy work, although we just did some of it tonight. I don't know when the last time was that we actually reviewed our policies. I think it was a long time ago.
I think that we should block off time, and then if we need to shorten it or cancel it, then that's fine. But if we want any hope of having a time in the spring, then we should probably.
Well, I have no life. My days are mostly open, so I'm looking to those of you who do have complicated lives.
So I'll, I'll kick off the conversation with Sydney, then.
Yeah, why don't we?
April 28th, 29th, 30th.
What do you say, April 28th, 29th, 30th? And we're talking daytime, full day?
Typically.
Typically, full day, yeah. 9 to 5.
28th would be the only day in there that works for me.
That does work for you?
Does work, yes.
Superintendent, do you have April 28th?
If the board's going to be meeting, I have April 28th.
So the 28th and 30th you can't do, is that?
I can't do the 29th, I could.
They don't have to be consecutive days.
30th I could make work. Can't do 29.
Are Wednesdays good for you, then? And Thursdays that not? Are Wednesdays good for you and Thursdays are not?
It's just, it's not that consistent.
Okay.
Yeah. It's literally what's on that.
I, I say we snag the 30th while you still have it.
On the Friday?
Yeah.
So for 28th and 4:30?
Yeah, Wednesday and Friday.
Okay, 28th, 30th.
Do you want to consider any potential topics that are burning in any of your minds and send them to me?
Yes.
I don't, I don't mean to give them to me now unless you have one that's burning in your mind. And Marnie and I can talk about this some more at Agenda Planning as well.
Got it. Okay.
And, gosh, that was all I had.
That "and" was exciting.
Anything else that anyone else has on calendaring or future agenda topics? I'm thinking no. Okay, anything else for the good of the order? Are we ready to adjourn this puppy? All right, the meeting of the school board is adjourned. It's still recording. Oh, no, it isn't.